Call to order the meeting of the Board of Education of Santa Barbara. Special meeting, is this on?
No, it isn't.
It's on. Is it on?
Oh, not yours.
Yours is? Mine was on?
Okay.
We'll call to order the special meeting of the board on October 27th. I had to stop and think of the date for a minute to address the single plans for student achievement. And our first order of business is the pledge allegiance.
Please stand and salute.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, next, I believe that Mr. Gonzalez will be doing a translation for us if we need it.
Noemi Vazquez.
Oh, noemi, oh, I'm sorry. I see you sitting right there too. Ms. Vazquez will be doing translation for us if anybody needs it. So, Ms. Vazquez?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Namille Vazquez. Traducción está disponible para esta junta, por favor de avisar si necesita asistencia. Gracias.
Gracias. Okay, we also have headsets available for anyone who needs assistive hearing technology. And that brings us to public comments. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the board? Hearing done, we'll move on. This may be our first meeting in, I don't know how long, well, we didn't have public comments. Our conference agenda, we carried over an item from our regular meeting on Tuesday evening. And so that's going to be presented, is going to be presented today by Mr. Gonzalez. So it's a report on the single plan for student achievement presentation format and demonstration of school plan template.
Well, this was meant to be a prelude. Why don't you present from the podium here? This is meant to be a prelude to our single plan presentation so that we could go over with the board what the format would look like and make sure we're prepared for this. So if there are any adjustments to be made, principals, you'll have to think fast on those. But Mr. Gonzalez will present what we've been doing with the single plan and the format for today's presentation.
Dr. Sarvis, thank you very much. In the year 2001, the California Legislature created the Single Plans for Student Achievement for schools that participate in federal and state categorical programs. The stated purpose of these plans was twofold. One, to improve the academic performance of all students to the level of the performance goals established by the State Academic Performance Index and by the federal adequate yearly progress. And two, to focus and monitor the use of federal and state categorical funds. This past April, the California Department of Education revised the Single Plan for Student Achievement. The template, the new template, provides a guide for continuous development, implementation, and monitoring of categorical programs. Use of this template requires collection and analysis of student performance data, setting priorities for program improvements, rigorous use of effective solution strategies, and ongoing monitoring of the results. This past year, the district purchased a software package, School Plan Online, designed to simplify the development and monitoring of our single plans for student achievement and to comply with the April 2006 changes that the State Department mandated. Our schools are currently in the process of phasing in school plan into their templates. It'll be about a year-long process to do it. You're going to see much of the new school online plans this afternoon. I will share with you that what these plans permit us to do is it permits the public, the board, the administration, the school site councils, interested faculties, to view online the Single Plans for Student Achievement. And that's the hallmark of this plan, of this software that we have purchased. Without, if there's no further questions, I'm simply going to introduce our Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education, and we will begin.
Okay, I'm going to continue a little bit with, it's just going to be quick, yeah. And so we have enough.
Is this still part of B1?
Or are you introducing the site?
Depends on whether you want to say something first.
Well, I just wanted, I just wanted to check with board members.
Right.
And I just wanted to check with board members, see if there were any questions on, on Michael's presentation, Mr. Gonzalez's presentation. No? I, I had just one question, I'm not sure that it's really relevant, but I was just wondering if there's any connection between this web-based tool and the material or software that we're going to be using from Edgiosoft? Will they be dovetailing? Will?
Yes, the databases constitute school plan, and the databases that are part of Edgiosoft are essentially the same databases. And when I say databases, I mean mainly the testing results from our standardized testing that we receive through the California Department of Education to establish our API and our AYP. In addition, once we get going with Edgiosoft, there'll be additional assessments that school sites will be able to use to monitor on a more frequent basis students' performance. But that's not been set up yet. It won't be until about three weeks that we begin the training for Edgiosoft.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? Okay.
Just a clarification. Edgiosoft was a secondary purchase, correct? It's?
That is correct.
Okay.
And the elementary district is going to be kind of working with the secondary district in a sense, watching this to see if there are any applications. We may even have a pilot or two school to use it. We're very interested in what areas will provide for us in the way of pulling up student information and such, and we may not need as big a bank of questions because we have other assessments that are already in place. So, I think Dr. Sarvis wants to introduce, and I guess it's another agenda item at this point.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Sarvis?
Good. Well, today we're anxious to deliver our, for board review, our single plan presentations for each of the schools. These presentations have to do with how categorical monies are used to achieve the student results that we have set as goals. As a prelude to that, I'd like to draw the board's attention to the two sheets of paper you have in front of you. One is school demographics. This is a list of school-by-school demographics on parent education level, the percent of students who are economically disadvantaged at each of the schools, the percent of English learners, the percent Latino, and the percent of students who are white at each of the schools. Notice that the data sources vary. I'm not sure why they vary like that. Davis, can you explain that across the top?
Is this from 2005 versus 2006?
Yes.
It's because some of the 2006 data is not available?
Okay, very good. Just to repeat that, some of, this is simply the most current data then. So where we don't show 2006 data, the most current data was 2005. The other sheet shows a school-by-school listing of achievement results. It starts with the API. The API is the State Accountability Model Academic Performance Index. You see the actual API score. This is the most recent score. It's based on the spring 2006 testing. You also see the state rank and the similar school rank. This was in fact from the previous year's testing. That was from spring 2005, and that won't be updated until March or so of this year, of this school year. Then you see the AYP results. And the AYP results are primarily from the California Standards Tests, although at the high school level, they're from the high school exit exam. You see the percent of students who are at or above proficient. You see that school-wide, you see that for each of the significant subgroups at the school. So, board members may want to refer to these as, as you hear a presentation from a school and want to be oriented to the student population or the student performance at the school. And with that, I'd like to introduce once again Robin Swawski, our Assistant Superintendent Elementary Education, who will be introducing the principals. They will be presenting their plans for the board review, and at the end of our meeting, we'll be asking the board's approval of these plans.
Okay, thank you. As Michael mentioned, we are phasing in this online version of school plan. And as Dr. Sarvis mentioned, it of course is in this, the school plans are aligned to the LEAP, and they are about the categorical funding and the activities that tie into that. One thing we did this year is we really listened to your comments. We even reviewed last year's tape and listened to the comments or looked at them about what worked for you, what made sense, listening to the plans, what you really wanted to have presented here. We're really aiming at consistency in the format as well as, you know, some of the content and in the presentation. Again, we're, it's, we're in process. And with the online version of the school plan, it is ever more so this year than ever before, I guess, in process, because this is a plan that you continually update. And so you, as we've mentioned before, you can have passwords and get into their plans. So this is the beginning of that, and we will be giving updates and such as we move along. One thing that we have always struggled with in these presentations is that we are also trying to align to board focus goals. When we talk about a single plan, the plan for the school, we know you don't want a list of all the activities that are going on in schools, but what you may or may not see in some of these plans is that every school has an attendance goal. That's aligned to our board focus goal, but it's not tied to categorical funding. So there are instances like that that may or may not be in what the principals highlight today, depending upon their needs and their targeted areas, but know that the whole school plan and their activities are aligned to board focus goals, and this is really highlighting the categorical funding piece of it and the activities. Okay, we're going to start with Sally Kingston, Dr. Sally Kingston at Harding Elementary, and then we'll move on from there. And you have a mic, right?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, and I appreciate you coming to hear about our plans today. I'm going to go through the executive summary. I know you've received a copy of that. I just wanted to know if you would indulge me for a minute if there's anything specific you want me to weave into what I'm going to talk about to best use our time? If you want to let me know if there's anything specific? Okay, I will go through the focus areas. First, I want to preface my presentation with saying, there's a level of disappointment at Harding that we are in program improvement status, that our API dropped 24 points. You know from the quote that I shared with Rob Kuznia in the news press that there is a high level of morale at Harding despite that because there's so many good things going on. And I know that we're about positive outcomes for students, but having processes in place and structures for a positive learning environment with the kind of instruction that's powerful for all students takes time. And so that's really been my message, and I want to clarify that upfront, that when I make a comment like that publicly, it doesn't mean that I'm not concerned. One of my biggest concerns is teacher morale. And I know that that's been true at other schools that are in program improvement status. So although teacher morale is high and people are working hard, we are also taking seriously the fact that our student achievement results have significantly dropped from '04, '05 to '06. So there's three major focus areas at Harding that are reflected within the single plan tied to categorical funding, and there's lots of other things going on. So I'll stick to the things that are related to that. The first is that the most important thing for us is improved student learning, and there's lots of things we're doing around that in the classroom, through professional development, through initiatives like the Harding Early Childhood Initiative, and through a continuous monitoring process which is not tied to necessarily exclusively categorical funding. So I'd like to talk about those three. I think the strongest, most important thing that I can do and that we're doing is continuous monitoring of student learning on a regular basis. There's lots of challenges with that. That's reflected in my executive summary. So the first piece is that we, we last year exclusively focused on reading because that's an area where we were struggling in our AYP and did not really focus on mathematics intentionally. That doesn't mean students were not taught mathematics, but what we really paid attention to, the kind of data we collected through formative assessments was exclusively around reading and reading comprehension. And so we're going to continue with that this year. We have three SMART goals. We've added on vocabulary as well as mathematics. And so I'll talk more about the continuous monitoring process. In that process, through dialogue with teachers, it became clear that things are not aligned across the grade levels. I think this is true through pre-K, through 12, it's an issue. I think prescribed curriculum can address some things with that, but there's also the teacher factor, the student factor, and other factors that play into how curriculum, what it looks like in the classroom. And so one of the major things that we're doing is what I mentioned, the Harding Early Childhood Initiative, which is a collaboration with UCSB, our new dean Jane Connolly, the Center for Individual Differences, and really anyone else in the graduate, the Gavert's Graduate School of Education who's interested in contributing to early childhood, to really look at what we can learn from pre-K and K and starting with a really strong foundation. And so our work has been around looking at some of the tools that the preschools use, which is called the ECHRS, the Environmental Rating Scale. What do the environments look like in preschool that are effective in kindergarten? I know you know, we received a substantial donation from the Biellas and Adobe Foundations for a pre-K, separate pre-K and kindergarten play space. And while those things have to do with the physical environment, I believe that that, if the physical environment is not set up for success for children and all the conditions for learning are not there, strictly focusing on curriculum and instruction, absent those things, is not going to make the kind of difference that we want to see for all children. So there's lots of work that we're doing in that area. One of the exciting things that occurred through our collaboration, pre-K and K teachers are meeting regularly with Jenny Martinez, our Child Development Director, and with me, is that we started to look at the data that kindergarten teachers collected around English Language Arts using the oral J, the fall oral J. And we started looking at students who were not showing the kind of progress even at this point in the year with letters and sounds, some of those foundational reading skills, and who was in preschool. And so now we're having a conversation about if these children had preschool, are there readiness skills that aren't showing up on an assessment? Is it, is it a testing environment issue? But why aren't we seeing that they're coming in able to name letters and recognize sounds? So we don't have answers to that, and I'm not bringing that up to mean to say that preschool hadn't taught those things effectively because there may be testing issues with a new kindergartner with a new teacher. But those kinds of conversations, I think, are key to us looking at how we prepare students and align the kinds of programs so children, particularly at-risk children, are successful. And then I've just, I just have a strong belief that if the learning environment is not the highest quality possible, both physically, socially, emotionally, that students are not going to be set up for success. So we do have an environment committee that, for example, Robin and others serve on Lynn Rodriguez as well as Helene Schneider, to really look at the facility at Harding. I think the fact that there's two schools on one campus with a bridge in the middle is a psychological barrier for students, parents, and teachers. So something unique, which is not real, because if you walk from one side of one campus to another, without that street in the middle, it's the same distance, but it feels sometimes like two schools. You don't have the ability to physically see where all of the children are. And so one of the things that's happened with moving the pre-K and K playground and the subsequent 18 classroom changes is that we have some primary and some upper grade mixed on both sides. And so now I don't have parents saying, I don't want sixth graders around my kindergartners even though they're neighbors, because there was a fear of children, not because of the children, there just wasn't the kind of collaboration. So looking at our, our physical environment as well as how well we're maintaining it, is it the highest quality? Is our playground sufficient for the kind of outdoor curriculum that promotes socialization, emotional regulation? All of those underlying factors, I think, are critical. So those are big focus areas. The strengths of the school, it's a very safe and orderly environment. I think we've seen a lot of growth in that area this year. If you come onto our campus, almost all the students will say, "Good morning, Ms. Kingston, how are you?" Really working on character education. It's, it's been a very rapid transformation, and that's because there was a strong foundation built before I got there in that area. There is a strong focus on student learning. If I give a teacher a research article, it's not uncommon that the next day they say, "I tried that strategy, that's great." So there's a lot of excitement about trying new strategies with students. Our continuous monitoring process, I said I was going to talk about that, I'll go into that a little bit. Last year, when I got, I reported to you that teachers reported to me, I was new last year, that the strength of the school were the grade-level teams. So I spent a lot of time working at the grade-level teams, giving them lots of discretion over what kind of instructional decisions they would make based on the students they were serving. And each month, the teachers met with me to monitor student progress. And it was a year of exploration where they were looking at what kinds of assessments get you, get you the kind of data that give you information to improve your instruction and frankly, to predict how well students will do on the STAR test. And that's something we're going to work on this year is, we want to have formative assessments that are meaningful for teachers, that also will be able to say, if we have 35% of our students proficient in reading comprehension, then on our assessments, we're pretty sure that's going to closely reflect how well they'll do on the STAR. And you saw in my report that at the end of last year, we had 35% of the students. But we also knew that each grade level was learning which assessments worked. So some used open court end-of-unit, which are more of a cold read, some used curriculum-embedded. Other teachers went out and said, "This doesn't work at all, I'm going to try something new." So a big focus this year is getting the right assessment. So we have John Yun from UCSB working with us, Mike Gerber from the Center for Individual Differences, and some of his graduate students whose studies are specific to, for example, vocabulary. If we don't have those assessments, how do we create those assessments? And that, to me, is a huge systemic piece, that without that, it's really hard to target the kind of skills kids need to use. And so I just will expand a little on that. I feel like a big part of my job is putting the systems in place, and you read that, that work for teachers, as opposed to piecemealing things, and they're working at a classroom level on putting together school-wide plans. So that's a change from this year. We have a lot of, back to what's positive or the strengths of the school, a lot of highly effective and veteran teachers at Harding. I think that's a tremendous strength. The grade-level teams are strong. And then in terms of adult learning, all of my staff meetings are professional development to the displeasure of some teachers who, that's hard for, because it's a lot of learning, and then we're working on how do we get more application time in. So if I'm learning something new about how to teach mathematics to English learners and what that looks like in the classroom, I need more time to kind of muck around in it. And so we're going to have more application, but all of our staff meetings are professional development. And then there's lots of exciting things that we're doing in terms of Waterford Training. Jenny Martinez and her staff are coming in and training kindergarten and preschool teachers on outdoor curriculum. We've implemented family-style eating, which is a way to develop ELD and social skills and emotional regulation in kindergarten, so we're getting training on that. We've had training on how to do interventions in the classroom through Mike Gerber's project, which was just phenomenal. And so there's lots of other instances beyond staff meetings. And then there's just a really high staff morale. I feel people are very positive, there's not, we're not walking around saying, "We can't do it." There's a sense we can do it, and it's also a lot of work. So there's, there's the morale with a sense of, wow, this is a lot, when you really look very critically at what works for students. It's a lot of emotional energy. And then there's two big things that I want to accomplish that I think will help us to improve student learning, and one is the alignment. We're starting small, pre-K and K, to really start, get some fundamental practices in place so that we have, and I don't know, I think this article was available to the board, the idea that at each grade level is a different rung in the ladder, ladder of learning. So I want to make sure that those rungs, the steps between the rungs are appropriate and that we aren't missing any steps. And then, and that's the early childhood, the continuous monitoring. And then formative assessments, and I know the district is working on this too, but I really don't want teachers to spend too much time identifying assessments and then assessing and not getting the kind of information that will help them to improve their practice and to improve student learning. And that's a really big piece of work. I wish, I wish there was just something I could put in place. And as I talk to others with expertise, the world of assessment is so huge, it's not that simplistic. So I think it's valuable, though. I've talked about what we're doing, you know the data, SMART goals. I'm going right to the, I know you want to hear about SMART goals, how everything's aligned. I did not make a, with the new plan format, there are lots of goals. And so I tried to get as many goals in that reflected how we spent the money, but the ones that I wrote as SMART goals are the student achievement goals, because those are the ones that actually, all those other goals are building toward promoting student learning. So the first one is that 40% of the students will meet or exceed reading comprehension through our continuous monitoring. I did not write on the STAR because I can't, I don't have an assessment tool that will give me the information to say at this point, I think this is how students will achieve. Ultimately, what we want to make our AYP for all of the, for all of the areas. And as you know, the one area we didn't make it this year was English learners for English Language Arts. And I know that once you're program improvement, that any subgroup in any, in any area can also have you go to the next level for program improvement. So reading comprehension, the things that we have in place, one is the Waterford, so categorical funds are used for Waterford Training. We're a beta site for Macintosh that has ongoing issues that are technical, so teachers are spending a lot of time managing their class and fixing technical issues. So that's been a little bit bumpy, but we have good response from Pearson Digital Learning. It's just that it's a product in development still. And teachers have been trained and they're excited, so we've started that. We have four credential teachers teaching reading intervention one-on-one. Last year, that was the kinds of decisions about which children were served within the guidelines of Title I students and the funding were made at grade levels. This year, I really want to see a school-wide program because I have said and will say, it didn't work if we went down 24 points in our API. It was good, it was a good start, we learned. So this year, the reading intervention teachers are teamed up with some graduate students from the, from the Center for Advanced Studies of Individual Differences, with me, our school psychologist, and our Special Education Chair, and we meet regularly. They began the year by assessing over 130 students, 130 students who were far below basic, below basic and basic, as well as students identified in kindergarten from oral J in first grade who needed to be assessed. And we use some of those formative assessments that we use for critical standards, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, and sight words, looking at all those foundational skills. And we ended up with a really sad number of students in upper grades who don't have sounds and letters. These are students who have gone to Harding, which brings me back to aligning the curriculum, having powerful curriculum, and making sure that students along the way, we're aware of what they, the skills they have and don't have. One of the reading intervention teachers reflected, "Last year I did this in the upper grade, and I did all reading comprehension, but I was serving students who didn't have sounds and letters, same students." So this is, I think, a really good move for us. It's a really hard move for the kids. Of course, it's one-on-one, it's a short amount of time, and our goal right now is for remediate phonemic awareness and phonics, and then regroup and say, "Let's move to another level and start getting deeper into the skills kids need." But we've struggled on our team with ethically, if you, we know that it makes a difference in the primary grades to really get kids going, but we can't have kids leaving our school that don't know sounds and letters. And I think that's a quick fix, and they're finding, the students are very responsive. But having a school-wide perspective like that is pretty sobering when you get down to those targeted skills. So that's, that's a change this year. They will continuously monitor, they will meet with me, we will go over the results, and we'll exit students at certain intervals. We're talking six to nine weeks, and we have some guidance from UCSB on that. And they're getting lots of training for evidence-based strategies for, specifically right now, phonemic awareness. right now, phonemic awareness. And then, reading comprehension, we'll continue to monitor that and giving teachers strategies in the classroom. Last year, uh, we began our continuous monitoring discussions around reading comprehension that kind of looked like, "Well, you know, the kids come from homes, well, you know how difficult." And that's not atypical when you have, uh, I think eighty-nine percent of your students that are economically disadvantaged. There's lots of other issues. And so, sometimes it's hard to get down to the instructional piece, because it all feels so big. So, we're trying to sort that out. And we started the year like that, and we ended the year with teachers looking at the assessment, saying, "It's making inferences. If it's on the page for an English learner, if it's black and white and they go back to the text, they got it. But if it's not written there and the language is nuanced, they don't know, because we've got to give them strategies and vocabulary." So, for me, the progress from our original discussions at the beginning of the year to the end of the year, I've not ever seen school-wide in my career. So, that's where I say teacher morale. I think that's a very sophisticated level of thinking, and it, it also shows me that they're really monitoring both the assessments and student learning. And so, that's where we're going to continue is, if making inferences is difficult, how do we do that? ELD is in place at our school, all of the grade levels have started regrouping. You know that when you have teachers trained in a prescribed program like open court and then you give them a framework, that's a huge shift that's causing a little bit of anxiety for teachers. So, what materials? And now, I think when, when we implemented open court, we heard, "Don't tell us, don't give us a program, we know what to do." And now, the shift is, it's overwhelming, because it requires curriculum development, identification of materials. So, while it's in place and teachers are using the framework, it's also a learning year. Um, the one grade level that's waiting is first grade, um, to do that until January, because they are so committed to the open court, is so tied to their, uh, their standards in terms of phonemic awareness and phonics, and really getting those sounds and letters in place. So, they'll then start up in, uh, January. So, that's the reading comprehension. Um, and then, the vocabulary with ELD, we're really going to work with, um, one of the graduate students from UCSB on the vocabulary assessments, because it gets into which words, why, curriculum-based, who decides what, what words students should know. And, um, she's, one of the graduate students has a way of creating assessments, so giving teachers the tool to create some assessments. In each open court unit, there's five words. And so, last year, when teachers did continuous monitoring at their grade levels, they said, "How do we assess vocabulary on five words?" Others moved it up to ten words, some had fifteen, some had twenty. So, we've got to have some consensus around, around that. Um, and then, mathematics is interesting, because math has always been a strength at Harding. And you know, about forty-two point three percent of the students were proficient, the English learners, in oh-four, oh-five. And then, last year, it went down significantly, and then they used alternative methodologies for our AYP, so we actually met the AYP. But without that alternative method, we had, would not have met our AYP. I believe, and I think the teachers would say, "Well, we didn't emphasize math like we used to." But there's a lot of teacher efficacy around math and science at Harding. In fact, they feel like that, that's their strength, instructionally, which is more unusual, I think, in an elementary school, where there typically is a little bit of fear of math. And so, I think that that will be easily addressed through the instructional practices that they've used in the past. But what we did in our continuous monitoring this year is, we sat down and looked at math, and it was two areas, according to the teachers, number sense from formative assessments and, um, their observation, and the other is algebra. Algebra in fifth and si, four, five, and six, and number sense. And then, we went through the state blueprints for the STAR and identified which are the most difficult areas, and decided we really need a goal around both, because if number sense is difficult in third grade, that it doesn't mean to say that the teachers in third grade are not giving students enough instruction in that area, because it's all cumulative and the skills build in math, and the same for algebra. So, if sixth grade has an algebra goal, absent kindergarten, first second, you know, the other grades, that won't make sense. So, that's a combined goal, and that's just a new, we're going to have to really work on how we're going to assess that. And I think there's some assessments we can use at the school, and it may fall out into two goals. Um, we've had professional development from UCSB around E, uh, English learners and mathematics, because it is a strength, uh, the presenter, Dr. Kar Lager, you could tell from his interactions with teachers that there's, the content knowledge is there. Um, I think it is reaching English learners and the, the amount of language, uh, in, in, in the algebra portion in particular. The number sense is surprising, because that is not as language-rich. And so, that's an area we have to look at and go, "Some of these things are just straightforward." So, what's happening there? Um, and then, underlying all these things, the other thing, um, that we're funding, as you know, enrichment classes for students once a week in science, PE, and technology taught by credential teachers, and that serves two purposes, one to provide enrichment for students, and the other is to provide ongoing collaboration time for teachers. So, they're planning, meeting, collecting, and analyzing data, and that's when they meet with me to do continuous monitoring once a month. We also extended our school psychology. These are all the underlying things, I think, that will support the goals. Our school psychologist is now five days instead of three at Harding, and that has been fabulous, because one of the major things that she's doing is following all the students from the student study team. So, typically, a student comes to student study team, and we each have a piece, you know, I'm going to call the parent and have a meeting about attendance, the teachers has a behavior plan, um, and it goes, the, the counselor's going to do a referral, and it's really hard to coordinate that. And so, she is going to coordinate that and follow up with every student, which will help with special education, so we're not getting, last year, we had a lot of referrals for assessment and very few students who qualified. So, really looking at not using those dollars and that important time of those professionals for assessments that don't make sense. And then, she's doing classroom observations, presentations on, uh, tolerance, um, crisis intervention. I mean, it's just a wonderful resource to have. And she's also doing individual counseling for the students who are most at risk, as well as, um, small group. So, if I have a disciplinary, but almost in some instances, like a guidance counselor at a junior high or high school. So, really helping with the social-emotional piece, that I would argue, we're all not trained in that area. Principals have training in most other areas that teachers do. We were all teachers, but to have a school psych who's got that specialization is fabulous. And then, we have an FSA counselor who handles a lot of the same kinds of things for other students, but at a different level. As interns, it's just a, a different skill level, but also really valuable, because I will say, one thing teachers identified last year is that there, we need more support for social-emotional. So, we have a family advocate, we have, um, the counselor, the FSA counselor, and then we have the additional two days of the school psychologist. And then, okay, I talked about professional development. Uh, just to add that one of the exciting things is that doing more professional development, I have groups of teachers now who are saying, "Can we do a book club?" Of course, you can do a book club. Okay, what's the best book for teaching vocabulary? We all want to go to Rusty's, ten teachers, and meet and read a book and meet regularly. That, to me, is just unbelievable, and that shows a, a dedication to the students, but also, I think adult learning is challenging, so when, when adults come to learning on their own and they're excited about it, it's, it's the best that you can ask for. So, I see that as a real positive indicator. Um, and then, school, uh, my school leadership, I think the most important thing that I can do is to monitor. And that's clear from the research, the meta, meta-analytic work that McCrell has done, both in the teacher practices, the principal practices, and they found the same thing in, in their recent superintendent study, is that it's monitoring student learning and evaluating it. And so, I've, I think that the continuous monitoring piece is huge, huge in the implementation, but also huge in its, uh, potential for impact. Um, also, modeling a focus on student learning, so that this example, the staff meetings are solely going to be about our learning tied to the goals. Um, being directly involved with curriculum, instruction, and assessment, to be able to say, "Okay, how does this work or not work?", and being in the conversation with teachers at a very, um, sometimes painful level, with the level of detail, let's say, with beginning reading. Do I know about phonemic awareness? Do I know what those strategies are? Can I help people walk through some of those steps? Um, and then, establishing effective systems that work for teachers. Uh, I get concerned when teachers are trying to, uh, piece together a school-wide program when they have a class to attend to. So, I'm really trying to put some systems in place that will work over time, and we keep re-adjusting and refining them, that they go, "Okay, now my job is easier." Not that they're not working as much, but they have the data they need, when they need it, the resources they need. I think that's huge. And then, again, supporting the collaboration among teams and across teams. Did I go over? Sorry.
I'm sorry, I don't know what that. It wasn't so much.
And then, um, promoting instructional leadership through questioning. This is a philosophical piece on my part, is that I feel strongly that often principals are put in the place to have all the answers, the district has all the answers, someone else has all the answers. And I think that the people closest to the children have most of the answers. We have different names at different levels, we can name things, so it sounds more sophisticated, but there's a lot of craft knowledge that teachers have. And I'm working every day to help teachers through the decision-making and problem-solving processes to make the kind of instructional decisions that will help, uh, students. I think if, if I tell everyone what to do, it's a short-term win. Um, I've done that, I said that last year. I think helping people go, "Well, what does that look like? How do I make that decision? Um, you, how do I use the data effectively?" Takes time, but I think it's a very important, uh, process, and it's a long-term win, because it's building the capacity of the professionals, um, that are working directly with the students. That seems like a small thing, that takes a lot of time. Um, and I, I believe firmly that it's important. And then, lastly, buffering the school from outside distractions. Uh, that's in the research, it's clear, that's really important. We get a lot of requests for a lot of things that are, look really good for elementary students, they're going to feel really good, they're going to make Harding look really good in the news press, but they're not going to impact student learning. So, a lot of my time is helping to say no, and then helping community members or, uh, others know, that, that the no is based on what our focus is. And I think over time, that come, once you build your school culture, it becomes easier, because people go, "Oh, that's what the school is about." Um, but there's a lot of that kind of work going on. And, I think, I'm going to end there, unless, I mean, there's one more page, but I don't know, it just goes into.
Well, thank you very much. That was a really thorough discussion of your plan, I think. I appreciate your going through those, those items. Do board members have questions that they would like to direct at Ms. Kingston? Dr. Noel?
Thank you for your report. It's very informative, and, uh, I just, I don't, this is not a question, this is a comment about No Child Left Behind, and it applies to anybody who's on program improvement, because I'm a great, I'm a great supporter of some aspects of No Child Left Behind, especially the way it focuses attention, which it tends to do, doesn't it? And, uh, but I'm also deeply concerned of, about, about stigmatization, which I think is the main effect. If you really look at the consequences of, of going into program improvement, very few of them really have much tangible, tangible impact. Sure, you have to use your Title I money a little differently for professional development, but you're probably going to do that anyway. Uh, but it's the stigmatization, and, uh, and I particularly was struck by your, a comment that your teacher morale, uh, is weathering that storm. And, uh, if, if that's exportable, and maybe, maybe you already report that, I think particularly that, uh, if, you know, I'm usually kind of critical of public relations efforts around here, but it seems to me that that, that is a very worthwhile one. The community should understand, uh, that this doesn't mean that, that, that teaching is bad at a, at a school, that something is wrong in, in any fundamental sense, and they don't, and they should understand that, uh, there could be progress going on at the school that doesn't show up on the, uh, AYP measure. And, and, and my last thought about that is that I have long felt, and I continue to feel, that we should, one way or another, uh, be able to take, have longitudinal data and talk about value-added, so that, so that for each teacher, they know that with the students they got, they left them better than they got them. Uh, that, to me, is, as a teacher, I know how I'd feel, uh, no matter what the storm was like around you, you can then say, "But I'm, I feel good about what's going on in my classroom." And I would hope that, and I know David, Mr. Davis says that we're going to have that ability, uh, with the new data, and I would just urge you, at the earliest possible time, to get tho, those kinds of data into the hands of our teachers and our principals and the public.
Can we just go down the row? Sure, we can, we can just go down the row, and everybody can ask their questions.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I probably know a little bit more about Harding than the other schools, because of my involvement there, but, um, so I don't have too many questions. But I, one question I have, um, having seen some inroads made through ELAC and through the site council in, in recent years, better understanding the, the expenditures of categorical funds and the purpose behind them, can you talk just a little bit about the site council and how it's been working since you've been here to help make these decisions?
Yeah, I'd just comment on ELAC too, because, um, at, as of this year, I'm happy to report, um, that the ELAC understands its purpose. It's really not that fun of a purpose to come and have coffee with the principal and look at the EL data and the program, but, um, Michael Gonzalez came and read through with the parents, and we spent a lot of time, and it was amazing. We've always talked about attendance, we've covered the mandated items, but it has mostly been me talking. And, um, you know, we, we monitor, I'll just talk about attendance, we monitor how many students have perfect attendance, and of course, I'm rethinking that, because there are excused abstinence's, and we don't want those students to be left out. So, next year, there'd be a way to include students who have good attendance, because it doesn't have to be perfect. But we're going to stick with that. And so, each month, I report in, in an assembly, and at one point, we had three hundred and thirty students with perfect attendance one month. And it ranges between, it ranged last year between one-eighty and three-thirty, which is really a good thing. And then, on the other end, I'm doing the truancy letters and meeting with parents, and, um, it's really a smaller group that is chronically, um, truant or absent. And the ELAC said, "Well, we, we would like you to make a poster in the entranceway that shows how many students have perfect attendance each month." And I just thought that was fabulous. So, now, in our entranceway, when you come to our school, you'll see that the first month, there were two hundred and fifty-four students at Harding with perfect attendance. And so, I think that they're really on the right track. Um, school site council, last year was my first year, we did a lot of capacity building, uh, almost all of the members went to the training that was held at Franklin School, and, um, a strong interest in doing things the right, the right way. So, what is our role, what is our purpose? And, um, I don't know, I guess I'll talk about how we get things to the school site council, which makes their job easy, is that I have all the teachers review the program. So, for last year, for this plan, last year, um, each of, let's say, the reading intervention teachers met with me, and they did a what's working, not working recommendations, the academic enrichment teachers, the counselor, and then I took that to teachers who reviewed the programs, and then they made recommendations for the major components of the plan and expenditures, in a way that then the school site council could look at the teacher feedback. Um, so, I think that is important, because it, teachers who are closest to the students know most what they need, and it gives a school-wide perspective. So, in that way, the school site council functions very effectively. Um, last year, we had a big amount of carryover, as you remember, which we effectively spent down, and so, most of our time was, "Okay, we have this much carryover, are we going to purchase this or this?" So, Alec, uh, looking at the allocations and making expenditures, which I think is an aspect of school site council, but clearly not its purpose entirely. And this year, we're really going to move into, into monitoring the program. So, my job will be, we have new continuous monitoring forms that teachers have created on Excel, that will disaggregate Title I students and English learners. So, when we were looking at reading comprehension, I was looking at all students, individual classroom rosters had who's an English learner, who's a special education student. But now, we'll take that information and aggregate it up by group. We've considered using the CELT scores to look at what are the Level One students scoring, Level Two, and teachers agreed and I agree, now we're monitoring three goals, we're going to keep it simple with the subgroups. Um, and so, that data, those data then, I will bring, or the school site council chairperson, it's a teacher, bring and present to school site council. So, we're looking at the data and saying, "Okay, if we still have, we're working on phonemic awareness in December," I have told them this, "You need to say, Sally, what are you going to do about that? Is that program working?" So, I want the monitoring to continue through school site council, which is a part- So I want the monitoring to continue through School Site Council, which is a part of their role. So we're working toward the instructional piece, which I think is important. Last year was the expenditure piece.
Thank you, because I think that's an important part of what's happening at the school right now. And I think the energy, as a parent, the energy is just fantastic at the school. Thank you.
Same questions for everyone. I mean, this isn't a Harding issue alone, but, I mean, we've made this evolutionary change from looking at summative data too late in the year to really make effective change to examining formative data on a regular basis. Clearly, that's, you know, a big shift that you've made at Harding. And I'm really concerned about where do we find these formative assessments and teachers spending time putting those kinds of assessments together? I mean, that's a real concern for me. And in the secondary, we did purchase Edgessoft, which should solve a lot of issues for, you know, a lot of different disciplines and grade levels in secondary. But it's not a nut that we've been able to crack in elementary. I mean, I don't know the answer. I'm sure you would all give me a different version of an answer on how you're putting together formative assessments or how your teachers are handling it.
I think there's programmatic pieces right now that were great. What the district had, what we previously created in the district for the critical standards could be improved. The open court assessments, they work. All of these work for how do I modify my instruction? What did they get from what I taught? But the piece that I've been talking to John Yoon about, I've talked with Dr. Sarvas about, is then are there assessments? So we're doing all this because ultimately, whether we like it or not, we want to know that the teaching and learning is effective. We also want to know how well the students will do on the STAR test. So one of my concerns is that if the STAR test is like a marathon, and our assessments are like a 1K or a 5K, then we have got to have some way of having students even prepared for the kind of length of, I'm thinking of the reading passages, frankly, in second through six, that are just so long, page after page. So that's a whole nother. And are there assessments that do both at the same time, so we don't spend all of our time assessing?
When you indicated that you try and aggregate the formative assessment data on a monthly basis, what exactly are you looking at? What pieces are you trying to put together?
So reading comprehension, vocabulary, and then the number sense in algebra, which may be two. And then, English, all students, English learner students, Title I students, and then special education students.
Okay. It's a lot of information. A lot of information. I'm assuming you do a bunch of it by hand? Is it all on Excel spreadsheets? Is it?
Teachers, on the 31st, teachers are going to be trained by another teacher at the school site who's modified the Excel spreadsheet, but they input the information by hand. And last, teachers are assessing much more than what we're monitoring. And so we are going to be clear on assessment windows. What is the criteria for proficient? And I really think monitoring three goals at that level is going to be extremely difficult. So I think some teachers are going to take off with it because they're more comfortable with the Excel spreadsheet and data. And I think for other grade levels, it'll be trickier. And the other thing that is in a discussion that I think is, kind of blew me away with, in the level of sophistication with first-grade teachers, is they said if they're really reading fluently, more fluently in January, what will we assess for reading comprehension before January? And so the research is clear that fluency is the main predictor of comprehension. But then, you'll hear from others that listening comprehension is really important. And so the guidance we've gotten from UCSB is both. But there really are no good listening comprehension assessments out there. That's what you hear from people in the assessment world. But so then, that conversation, I think, is really important. If we're just looking at fluency, and we're thinking that is the predictor of reading comprehension, but we know listening comprehension is, we need to find a way to start paying attention to that. So we have great discussions. It would be nice to have the assessments. Yeah. I think it's a work in progress, for sure.
I'm sorry, can I just ask for clarification on that?
When you say fluency, you mean reading fluency, right? As opposed to language fluency?
Right. Reading fluency. Yes, thank you.
Question that doesn't necessarily relate, it relates to board goals, but not necessarily to the single plan. And I really like this new format. I mean, being able to go through the same format for each school, same, it was really, really helpful. School attendance, I mean, clearly, it's a focus for everyone. It's a board-focused goal. I think that we need to have a discussion at the board level on where we're going to go if we're going to try and create any incentives, financial incentives, if there are savings. And I know that it could augment certainly the elementary budget, but, I mean, could we create some smaller incentives, much the same way that, you know, the Governor Awards worked, you know, several years ago?
We're bringing our district goals to the board for AYP, APY, attendance, and as part of those, the incentive program will be an important one, we think.
Okay. And then, another question related to district, after having looked through a number of plans, you know, themes emerge. We never get any feedback, any data about elementary discipline, elementary suspensions, for instance. We never see that. We see it for secondary. And if it's something that's important to school sites, and I suspect that it is, I think it would be really important for the board to see that information so that we can all be working on the issue, that it's not just an issue for a principal at a particular school site.
Actually, at our last meeting on Tuesday, Michael came in, and we are verifying between our district office records and the school records, the number of suspensions and the categories for last year. So I can certainly put that in a board brief for you. You'll also be getting, at our next principals' meeting in November, we're bringing all of the English language learner, English language arts data, critical standards, together by school, by grade level. And we're going to be analyzing that with UCSB and putting forth, you know, kind of our analysis, but I'll be getting that to you also in the board brief. Another piece of data. I know not, but it is related to your board-focused goal.
And then, two more questions, and maybe this one is for Dr. Hayden. But in every single reporting form, the CELT data is being corrected. So how do sites deal with it if they're still waiting on corrected data for the CELT, and everyone's goal is to try and increase everyone by one level in the CELT in the upcoming year?
Well, it is being put in pretty soon. We had a problem with CTP McGraw-Hill. It wasn't until a couple of months ago that got resolved. And so that's, it wasn't our fault, it wasn't our school district's fault. So it's, we're trying to get it in. Right now, we're under the gun for getting ARES implemented, and so there's a priority of what gets done. I'm sorry about that.
No, it's just, it's that whole, you know, tug and pull between summative data and formative data.
I need to add to that one. In fact, Dr. Hayden did quite a job on this. We frankly threatened to sue CTP if they didn't produce our data in the way that we sent it in. And they finally relented this last spring. And I didn't bring that to you, but he was very clear with them that you caused this problem, you need to fix this problem. So I'd like to thank him for his effort on that.
Great. I'm glad I asked about it. Okay. I think that's just about it for now. Thank you very much.
May I just say something that's pretty valid on to Mrs. Harrier's comments? It's a plug for, it's a plug for an idea. The only guy in the room knows, has ever touched it, is Davis Hayden. There's an adaptation of audience response technology that now is classroom-oriented. And that simply means that kids, you know, like they do in focus groups, the kids get a little keypad, a little for discreet responses. The PowerPoint shows the probes, learning probes, and immediately, the computer shows the results. So you get, talk about frequency of assessment. There it is, bam, you've got it. And you know who didn't get what. And I'm just, to me, as a teacher, I think, oh, I wish I had known that at the time about some of my classes and some of the students who didn't get it. And I would love to put a plug in to you principals, to the district, that we do a pilot of something like that and see. I mean, that takes continuous monitoring down to about the finest line that you could get it to.
We have a.
We have a Jeopardy-type device that we produced in partnership with United Way, with Al Sankey's ROP course at Dos Pueblos High School. They're producing the devices. And we've had them in use at Lacumbra School, and we're spreading them out to other schools as well.
Same kind of gadget?
Well, it's a who responds first sort of a model, instead of aggregating the results across the screen.
This one's only $1,500 for a thirty-station classroom, and all you need is a desktop and PowerPoint. I couldn't believe it, because it used to be pretty expensive technology, the first time I discovered it. It's Geneva Systems, if you're interested.
Geneva?
Geneva.
Thank you.
It was a different company. At City College, they also offered that as, we could test that. We could demonstrate in our classrooms.
Did you?
I didn't happen to choose to do that, but yeah, people are, I think people are doing it. Yeah, I'll just make some comments. I found also that this format was very exciting, and it focused things a lot more. I don't know how it is preparing this document. It seems like quite a big switch from last year. It must be a whole nother job to put this together, and I hopefully this will stay this. But it makes the programs seem very dynamic, and I'm excited to see the results of this and see, because there seems like so many things going on at once that the future looks very bright, and there's a reason for good teacher morale. So I really don't have very much else to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had a quick, a couple of questions. One was very specific. It was just, you mentioned, I think, McCrell? Was that the? And I may have overlooked it, but I didn't see it cited in the document. And I just wondered what that research was.
McCrell is like West Ed. It serves the mountain area, so North and South Dakota, Colorado, Wyoming, Kansas, Missouri. And that's where I worked before I came. And so they do meta-analytic work. Bob Marzano is their primary researcher in classroom instruction that works, all published, mostly through ASCD. So they did a meta-analysis of classroom instruction, the school-level factors, principal, and they just finished a superintendent study. And the one thing that keeps having the highest correlation is monitoring and evaluating. And so there's so much research out there for me when there's a meta-analysis, although there's controversy over using meta-analyses. It's really helpful to go, what is, if you put all those studies together, what does it say? And they're all saying the same thing.
Dr. Kingston was one of the lead researchers for McCrell, and we were.
Researcher?
Well, excuse me. Well, you did publish. And you'll recall that we had at least one of our publications in the board brief earlier this year. In fact, I have the research on what superintendents do that make a difference coming into the next board brief. So you'll be able to see that this weekend, I think. But we were very happy to entice her back from McCrell.
The other question that I had, most of my questions have already been touched on by others, and I do, before I say that, I do want to echo the appreciation for this more unified format. It was much easier to read, I think, for you, for the presenters, it may have been a little more difficult, because it seems a little more text-heavy rather than all the data charts that we used to have. But for those of us with a, you know, with a sort of a text learning style, it was a lot easier for me, I can say personally, to grasp and understand the information that you were presenting, because it seemed to sort of distill it down to how all of these pieces fit together in terms of what your goals and plans are. The question I had was, had to do with the constant monitoring, because as we talked about it, and when I was reading it, I thought about this, but then, as you were discussing it, it seemed even more so, that a lot of the kinds of data gathering that we're talking about seems, in many ways, like classroom-based research. And I was wondering if some of the techniques or some of the strategies that had been used previously, and probably still used, in classroom-based research approaches, could achieve some of the kinds of things that we're trying to get at? Are they achieving? I mean, maybe you're already, I assume teachers are already doing this. I mean, I think everybody uses some form of classroom-based research. Well, everybody does in testing and things like that, but I think even more the very quick kinds of things that the technology can provide instantaneously. But we also, I mean, you know, years ago, we were doing similar things, but just on, you know, index cards or something. Is that, is that a way to get the data? Or is, does the, do the data need to be more formal than what classroom-based research allows?
I think for improving instruction, it can go from teacher observation to a standardized pencil and paper technology. But the whole notion, which is where we got last year, is, okay, so if we have these 35% proficient, does that mean that we're getting closer on the STAR? And in fact, it wasn't at all. So I think that, looking at those two purposes, I'm not so sure that part of the testing issue that teachers are identifying, particularly for English learners, is that if I have 10 pages of text, or let's say, five pages of text, and at the very end, I have questions, and I'm reading the instructions, that's a lot of sustained reading time for specific questions, and that's a lot of text to go back to. So it's kind of my 1K, 5K marathon. What about the testing format and the need to understand the length of time on task and how demand, the demands of testing? So I think for sure, the more quick assessments we use in instruction to improve instruction work, I'm not, I don't know enough to know about predicting, if you will, on the STAR.
Thank you. I think there was one other question I had. I just want to see if I can find it here. Oh, you mentioned the need for more support for social-emotional needs, and you were talking about how the, moving to a five-day psychologist on campus was helping with that. Is it your feeling that the five-day psychologist was really sort of a sufficient approach? Or were you saying that you needed, that there was more that was needed?
If I were going to speak on behalf of the teachers, they would say there's so much more that's needed than one school counselor. And then, it's really, her three days of her time, just to be clear, for special education, two days is additional that she serves other students. And then, we have the family advocate. I think there could be more time. And I will say that one of the reasons that the staff came up with this recommendation as opposed to a second FSA counselor is that she was a classroom teacher. She did work in LA Unified, and she's extremely skilled. So if there's an issue, let's say, with a student who's not in special education, who may need a behavior plan, not a formal one, she'll look at the environment, and there's so much teacher trust. Teachers are going to her and saying, can you look at my environment? Is it something that I'm doing? They're never going to come to the principal and say, am I doing something that I could change? So in that sense, because of the credibility she brings and her experience, and having been a classroom teacher, I think we're in kind of a unique position that she understands both the testing and individual and small-group counseling, as well as what an effective classroom looks like to help teachers.
Well, I think, actually, you just touched on something that I think we see a lot, probably everybody does, but I think we see it a lot in our district. And that is that a lot of times, the success is sort of individual-dependent. I mean, this works really well because of the individual who happens to be in the position. And if it were somebody other than that, if this person retired, left the district, et cetera, and brought in somebody else who didn't have exactly that same background, it might not be as effective. And so, you know, something we have to think about, but also something that I think we should be very thankful for, that we have these people who are supporting us in a variety of ways. So I really think that's an important point that you just made. Thanks. Okay. I think we can go on to Franklin.
Okay. Right before Carol Navara starts with Franklin, I want to make one comment about the assessment, because it keeps coming up, and I think it may continue to come up. Sally mentioned our work with John Yoon for the Center for Educational Leadership, and it's tied to this. And it's tied to this because this is the way we are spending a lot of our, not a lot, but some of our Title II funding as well as the end of our program improvement grant funding is to work with the Center for Educational Leadership. And specifically John Yoon and Margarita Gonzalez and the team from SELLIS is going to be working with every one of our schools on these middle four modules that they put together around formative assessment. We're holding them at McKinley School because McKinley wanted to have the whole staff there. Juanita wanted every teacher to be there. And so we have lots of room for other staffs to do that. But specifically around the standards, we're really looking at it. We have our curriculum embedded assessments that we're using on a regular basis. But the standards based assessments outside of the ones we're doing for a report card, those more mid, you know, like every month or every six week. What we're not sure about, because in Sally, like Sally stated, they thought they were moving along with this many kids proficient. And sure enough, at the end of the year, they weren't, is that do we understand when it says it's going to, we're going to be tested on this standard, even if we look at the blueprint with the number and even if we look at released items, do teachers really understand what that means to instruct at the level in which the kids are going to be tested? The length we talked about, but really the depth and breadth of that. What is it? Do we really understand what that standard is? And so we're looking at that as well as on questions. And we're not thinking of designing all of these assessments ourselves because there's lots of good examples out there. But what can we also put in there with possible answers to those questions? They can be diagnostic for us. If a kid answers this way, that means they don't get this. If they pick this answer, it means they don't get that. So we're really looking at fine tuning, making the job easier and more precise for teachers so that we're spending less time actually assessing and the assessing we're doing is part of the instruction for students and for us. So I'm really looking forward to that work. And as I said, all the schools are involved in it.
Just to follow up on, on your comments. A few years ago, I was attending an intersegmental conference on Latino achievement. And there was a gentleman from, which is the new one, I think it's UC Merced, is that it?
Oh, yes.
Yes, Merced, who was doing a lot of work with analyzing test scores for individual school districts. And one of the things that they looked at is not only analyzing what the areas were that the students had difficulty with, but how that was weighted on the test scores so that you, the schools could focus their attention on the ones that would be, have the greatest sort of return in.
And those are the blueprints. So on CD website, we have the blueprints. We know how many, how many questions are going to be on each one of the standards.
That was the number sense algebra.
Yeah. So I'll just say really briefly because this was so interesting. Teachers identified number sense in algebra. And so then I, they identified the key things that were difficult. So that will be kind of the roadmap. And then I took all those weighted items and added them up across number sense and algebra and functions, it's called. So in second grade, those two areas, sixty-seven percent, third grade, sixty-seven percent, fourth grade, seventy percent of the star, fifth grade, seventy-one percent, and sixth grade, sixty-eight percent. So that, then I said, this is a good area to focus on.
Yeah. And one of the things that he was doing, do we, do we get this sort of by individual student? Where they're having the difficulty? And sort of how it's weighted, how, where their scores are in terms of the?
By content area.
By content area?
Yeah, you get a percentage.
But I mean, when you're aggregating the data and looking at it, are we looking at it sort of, are we also disaggregating it and looking at it by individual student to see where we might be able to work with that individual student?
Yes, both on the star and in continuous monitoring.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Now, thank you. Thank you for indulging us there. And we have Carol Navara's with Franklin Elementary.
Good afternoon. A little nervous today. I don't know why. I'm a little nervous. I will relax. At our August administrative retreat, Dr. Sarvis kind of came to us with some real very clear news about where he thought our achievement scores would be as a district. And he asked us to, to think about where we were and what our reaction would be, or what our reaction was. And to no surprise, my reaction was, you know, I was anticipating that we might fall into PI. So when he asked what was my reaction, you know, and he just asked us to think about it in our head, mine was like, duh. I knew, and I had this gut feeling that we were going to be falling into PI. But what I, what I really appreciated from that meeting that day was that Dr. Sarvis asked us to look ahead. He said, if you were to look at the headlines in August two thousand and seven, what would the headlines read? And I remember writing down my headline saying that we worked ourselves very diligently and hard and got out of this program improvement status. The second one was we finished our construction, which as you know, has been very time consuming and very demanding on, on us, on us at a lot of, on a lot of levels. I went forward and I asked my teachers to do the same thing. And one really stood out to me and I want to share that with you today. I asked my teachers because of course, you know, as Dr. Noel mentioned earlier, it is stigmatizing to, to be called a PI school because we know how hard we're working. And yet, at the same time, we know that there are improvements that need to be made. So I asked my teachers to create these headlines. And one of my teachers, very creative soul, wrote, Swiss or cheddar? Question mark. And this is what she wrote as her headline, or as her article, just starting off the article. In August two thousand and six, Franklin students were referred, were referred to as Swiss cheese because of the many holes in their academic arsenal. Now August two thousand and seven, they rank among the sharpest of premium high grade cheddar. And it was funny because when we, we met with Susana Dutro with the ELD training, you know, she mentioned that a lot of our English learners do come with these holes. And it's our responsibility as classroom teachers, as administrators, as district administrators and board members that we fill these holes. And so this little motto of being, you know, sharp cheddar has really stuck with my staff. And when you talk about that determination and that need to say, yes, we can reflect and we have reflected on our practices. And how do we move forward so that our kids don't, don't leave us as Swiss cheese, but leave as sharp cheddar? And, and that's where I'd like to take us. One of the things that I think is really significant for us at Franklin School, and I know I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but is the demographic change. We have seen a decline in our student enrollment. Last year, we ended the school year with about six hundred and twenty students. We're now at five hundred and sixty students, which for me as an administrator, I love. It allows me to have more interaction with students. It also allows me to monitor what's going on in the classrooms much more effectively. And again, this is significant because of scheduling. As you know, we have two campuses on our school, not only Franklin School, but Cesar Chavez Charter School. And the smaller school size will allow us to look at our scheduling. And I'm really hoping to evaluate how we schedule activities at Franklin School from lunchtime to recess times to really maximize student learning. And I'd like to actually make some of these changes in January two thousand and seven. The other thing, of course, is a smaller campus, I feel is much more effective for students. And so I'm, on one hand, I'm very sad that, you know, earlier this September, we did lose two teachers as part of the, this decline in enrollment. And that was difficult for our staff to have to go through. But I think that if we can anticipate what our numbers will be in the fall a little bit more clearly and be a little bit more conservative about that, then hopefully we'll be able to maintain these numbers at five sixty. Okay. So with that, I will go into our, our schoolwide focuses. Of course, English learners is a high priority. It's the highest priority for us at Franklin School. Our English learners was the only subgroup that did not meet the AYP. We had seventeen point, or seventeen point four of our English learners actually met the proficiency levels, proficiency or advanced levels. And as you know, that means we have to increase by seven percent. That's huge. And how are we going to do that? Well, I think we, we've started our professional development for this school year, beginning with the Susana Dutro ELD, has really kind of focused our attention on how we can support English learners better. Not just speaking to students in English is going to get them where we need them to be. And so teachers now are having actual discussions and meeting collaboratively to determine how they can best meet the academic language needs that our students have. And there are many. But beyond the ELD focus, we'll also be implementing the STEEP RTI model, which we are very excited about. We just received training. And again, these are, I, I'm going to refer to some of the, of our actions almost in the future tense because we haven't really completely started them yet. We're, we're looking at, we have them in place, but they have, it takes some time. One, it takes time for the teachers to receive the training, but also just to begin the implementation phase. So we just recently had the RTI training, which was very exciting for teachers, a little overwhelming because again, it requires a lot of effort on their part. But there is a wonderful support system that comes with RTI from the university as well as training our psychologists and our resource teachers to help implement this. Because again, it's about capacity building. We can have all the professional development in the world, but if we aren't building this capacity within our staff to carry on these interventions or these, these programs, then it's really not going to serve anyone very well. It'll only be a temporary fix. So we are really excited about the RTI program and also the Waterford Early Reading Program. Part of our new building, which we're hoping to move into relatively soon, next month, November fourteenth, should be the ribbon cutting ceremony. And I expect all of you to be there to celebrate with us. There will be a lab, a mini lab for students to go in daily between fifteen to twenty-five minutes a day. And looking at our early, our English language, English language arts scores in our primary grades, I'm hoping that this will be a wonderful supplement to the open court program. Many of our students, particularly our second grade students, scored very poorly on the standardized testing. And I'm, I am excited to, to implement the Waterford Program. And I know that my teachers are too. Again, we will be receiving professional development to support their, their implementation. Okay. And I think the, the other more, most important focus for us is increasing time on task. Making sure that we are, are, are able to fully use the six hours that we're given each day. Because our students don't typically go to homes where there is a lot of academic support. We truly need to maximize the day. And so that, again, that's another reason why it's important for us to relook at our scheduling, to look at how we're using our time on campus. And also, our hope is to build a community of, of learners. And as we know, there are several challenges that our students face, social, emotional challenges that our students face. And Sally mentioned earlier that, you know, we really do need to take care of that. We have, we have allocated some of our funding to serve those emotional and social needs of our students. What, as far as our, our, our profile and our highlights, I would definitely say that Franklin is a caring community, one that is, is very supportive of students and their families. And I think many of our families do feel that kind of support. We really need, we really embrace ourselves around students, not only academically, but socially and emotionally as well. But there is that urgency. And the teachers are feeling that urgency that we have to make some changes. We have to reflect on our practice. And how are we going to do that? So my, our SMART goals are as follows. To increase the percentage of English learners scoring proficient or advanced by seven percent as measured on the California Standards Test in English Language Arts. And as I explained, I think there's several, several things that we need to do in order to make that happen. One, of course, we have these intervention programs, the RTI, the Waterford Early Reading Program. But those are just two programs and it doesn't really change our daily practice as far as across the, across the grade levels. And I really think it's necessary for our teachers to really review the essential content that every grade level is expected to, to receive at the end of the year. I will be working with teachers to, to, to review those, those, those essentials, essential standards and develop calendars so that we can ensure that students are getting what they need, that we have the time to make that happen. That is part of the Texas model that we had been trained in previously. And it's something that we continue to do, but I think we need to relook at that. We need to relook at how we, what we're scheduling, how we're scheduling this instruction and making sure that kids get exactly what they need in order to move to the next grade level. Because if we have sixth graders that aren't able to read and phonics or phonemic awareness is something that is, that they're struggling with, we need to catch up much earlier. And we need to ensure that students at particular grade levels are leaving with these minimal skills to advance to the next grade level. And if we can't ensure that, then we're going to continue to see the problems that we are seeing. The other, the other important thing that we need to look at is assessments. And I think that's just across the board. Sally spoke to it very well. And I know that, that Robin and the district administrative team are, are supporting us in our efforts to find assessment tools that will really give us the information that we need. Our teachers have, have pooled a variety of resources for assessment, but they haven't always given us the data or appropriate data. And I think the RTI model will allow us to have some of that. Looking at how students are performing as far as fluency and then also in mathematics. And we're hoping that we can move beyond fluency with the RTI model and move into comprehension. But first things, first they remind me, we, we need to focus on one thing first, and that'll be fluency and then math. As far as our math scores, we don't want to lose sight of that. We, we were able to meet all of our targets in math. And that is a strong area for our school. However, we've realized that some of the basic facts that kids need aren't being mastered as, as effectively as, as they should be. So we're not going to lose sight of math, even though we're, we're past, we actually have surpassed the targets in most, in, in all areas. We still don't, we want to maintain that momentum. And it's, and maybe it's easier for teachers to teach math because there's, there's a, there's a right answer. There's a wrong answer or a right answer. And it's very easy to see how kids are performing as opposed to English Language Arts where it's very, especially for our students as English language learners, it's a little bit more difficult to determine whether it's actual language or, or, or something else. So we will be continuing to focus on our, on our math scores by implementing the accelerated math program. And that's one of the things that I think has really helped us. We have been, the accelerated math program is a program where students work at their, their own personal, individual academic level. So they're not working, if they're in fifth grade and they're at a second grade level, they would be working from a second grade library. And that really does accelerate their, their achievement. So they're working on, 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 on concepts that are at their level and they move forward. So that, for us, that has been really a positive program. And I think it has had definite impact on our math achievement. And of course, we're looking at increasing our CELT scores by one level per student. And one thing that we are doing very differently this year is we're utilizing our newcomer teachers to work with those kids that are scoring at levels one, two, or three, working with those students, particularly in the writing area, so that they can move beyond, at, beyond that, that third level. We see many of our kids getting stuck there. And we need to figure out a way to move them out of that. Many of our kids can speak English, can read English, but when it comes to putting their thoughts down on paper in writing, it's, can be very difficult. And so we're working on, on developing writing skills as we move these kids from one level on the cell. as we move these kids from one level on the CELT to the next. Okay, so as far as our professional development plan, this focus on ELD that we have been receiving with Susana Dutro has been extremely helpful. However, it has also created some challenges for staff. Again, looking at resources, materials, that is something that we will continue to work through. But I think just that the awareness that we have to focus, we have to focus on ELD as a, just as much as we focus on English Language Arts and on math is critical. Again, you will walk onto my campus, and you would, you would find many of the kids being able to speak to you in English, but what are they truly understanding as far as the academic language? And we, it's really good to see our teachers beginning to collaborate. I can't say that they're all implementing the ELD as they need to be at this point in the game, however, that they're actually talking about this and figuring out ways to support English learners. I spoke about the RTI and the Waterford. Avid is another area where our teachers will, our sixth grade teachers have received some training and will continue to receive training. And I think those, those student study skills are critical for our students. And I know that my fourth and fifth grade teachers are equally interested in developing those skills early on for our kids at Franklin. So, what are, what are my plans for supporting students? My goals, I have three, are to establish a vision for Franklin School that includes input from staff, parents, and students. As we see Franklin School kind of evolve now, especially with this new building, I see it as kind of an opportunity to emerge as something very new, something that we can build support particularly, not just from, I mean, we've always had the support from our staff and from the students, but I really hope that this is an opportunity to build the support of the parents and the community. This will be quite a celebration, and I think that there's, this, that the building is just a, a symbol of support for our school that I think our families really needed to see. And so, I'm excited that we will be moving in and that we will be really developing that area so that our students have exactly what they need to have. I mean, our kids have been without a playground for a couple of years now due to this construction, not because of there hasn't been a, the finances to provide for it, but I think that those are some key elements that are crucial for student success. And I'm hoping that with this, we'll see a new Franklin School with this new building. My, my, I, I would like to continue to visit classrooms, obviously, and provide teachers with feedback. Because if I'm not in the classrooms and I'm not able to help teachers and provide them with some feedback, then how will their practice improve? So, that is one of my biggest goals this year, is to make sure that I'm there regularly visiting and then also monitoring. And I think that's a real big piece of the puzzle that hasn't been as in place as well as it should be. And figuring out how to put structures in place so that teachers can collaborate, that we can work around assessment data, and we can talk about where kids are struggling, where they're succeeding, and how we can provide interventions ongoing, and maybe change the structure of some of our interventions if we find that they're not working. So, that is definitely an area where I feel I need to really focus my attention. It's something that hasn't happened as regularly as it should, and I'm determined to make an effort to have our teachers work together and have me facilitate those conversations around data and achievement. Hmm, okay. Trying to think of others.
Thank you, Carol. I wanted to just note for the board that with the building being completed, the wings and the library being completed, that we have the ribbon cutting scheduled, as I recall, for November fourteen.
Yes, sir.
And board members, of course, are invited to that. I believe it's one thirty. It's a Tuesday at one thirty. And that's just the start of the move in. Once our teachers are moved in, once our library is, has been moved into, then Carol will schedule with her staff an open house so that the parents, the school community can all take a, a look at the finished product.
A sigh of relief.
Okay, board members, would you like to, oh, me? Okay. I had a couple, I actually had a couple of questions. One had to do with your Avid program that you have on campus. Could you just explain a little bit how you use it with your students?
Okay, it's really a, a way of helping students become, become real students as far as organization, look at using daily, a daily calendar to write in assignments, organizing their, their homework, et cetera. Also, giving them appropriate study skills, like note taking in particular, how to summarize what they've just learned and put it into a note form so that they can take it back and review it and apply it to their learning.
In many of the secondary schools, it's used as sort of a, a support for students who are trying to access the higher level courses. At Franklin, does, does it lead to students being identified perhaps for higher level courses when they're going, when they're transitioning into the junior highs?
Well, all of our students are getting, all of our sixth grade students will be receiving Avid, you know, Avid. It's not a class, it's not a program, it's just a way of organizing and becoming a, a successful student.
Okay, so, it's, it's an integral part of your, of your daily curriculum. It's not a pullout or, or push-in, as some classes say. Or I guess it is a push-in rather than a pull-out. And so, they're all getting it. So, is it resulting in more students being identified for higher level courses when they transfer to junior high?
Well, I think it's, it's, it's an opportunity for kids to have the skill so that they can look to that as an, as an option, so that they look to higher education as an option. Because a lot of our students don't come to the junior high with those skills. And so, they're, they may not be target, they may not be moved into or, you know, directed into, onto a college path. And so, we're hoping that by giving the, the students the skills early on, that they'll be able to take part in these programs and continue with Avid and hope, at the junior high and at the high school level.
Let me add to that. That's really how it's designed across the district, that if you start with the Avid skills in grade seven, then you've already lost your opportunity to accelerate those students as they move into seventh grade. So, so by starting in the middle grades, and eventually we'll be moving down to fourth grade, four, five, six, then we'll be ready to go with those students and accelerate them into their seventh grade classes.
One of the things that I'm interested in, and I'm not sure that this is actually the appropriate venue in which to discuss it, but it's getting more of the elementary school students identified for honors or even gate classes when they get into the junior highs. But that may be a discussion for another time. I also want to ask you a question about, in your report, you said that parenting, one of the, the obstacles or barriers to improvement was that parenting classes are not fully accessed. Do you have any sense of why they're not being fully accessed?
Well, we're, we're really fortunate to have a Healthy Start Advocate who is a dynamo, who's ready and willing to get outside speakers, services for our parenting classes. She meets once a week with our families, and we have, I think on average, about thirty-two moms in the morning meetings come to our weekly Thursday parenting classes. But that's thirty-two parents, that's not, I mean, out of five hundred and twenty parents. Now, granted, we know that a lot of our parents are working, and so, you know, from nine to eleven, they're not available to come and attend parenting classes. So, she also started a weekly men's group only, Monday evenings from seven to nine. And we have about twenty-five male parents who are attending these classes on a weekly basis. And I think we're just looking at other ways to figure out how can we involve our parents in, you know, at appropriate times. And maybe we need to offer more evening parenting classes. But to think that we have twenty-five men who come and, and listen, they just received training from the fire department on, they went through their six-week or eight-week training, you know, how to respond in, to an emergency situation, whether it was at their home or at their workplace. So, she brings very, in, very appropriate topics for their discussions. She's trying to build this program up, and it's just unfortunate that we don't have more parents attend. They're there, they're available, and we hope to expand it, looking at possibly evenings, evening parent nights.
Just an aside, are the, the, the men who are attending the class, do they tend to be the partners of the women who are attending the classes? Or do we have a, you know, a double number of parents who are, or families who are being represented?
I wish I could say we had a double number of parents represented, but, you know, our Healthy Start Advocate is very, very determined to get parents involved. And so, she'll say, "You need to send your husband to the," and I, and she literally calls them. The program starts at seven, she's calling them at six o'clock to remind them. And she's even gone to some homes and said, you know, "It's, it's almost time, you better come over." Because of course, our dads are working throughout the day. They come home very tired, because many of them have laborious jobs. And, you know, and so, she's determined, and, but we're building that momentum, and I think that's, that's really key. We know that parent support, student achievement isn't going to happen without parent support, and whatever we can do to build that. And this is, like I said, a small step. We're not there yet, but it's a step.
Well, I attended your back-to-school night, and I thought that it was actually an impressive number of parents who were there, and really whole families, not just the parents, because the children, the, the younger siblings, even the older siblings were also there, and so, it was a, a very family sort of oriented event. So, yeah, I just wanted to say that, I thought that, it seemed like you're, you're going in the right direction. I was just wondering why, if you had a sense of why they weren't fully accessing these classes, because they seem, in my observation, it seemed like the parents were pretty involved.
We'd like them to be more involved, but.
We always do, yes.
And thank you for being at our back-to-school night.
Following on our question about parental involvement, as the site council, I noticed some vacancies on here. Is that typical? Is that something, a problem for you?
It has been a problem. I think some parents are intimidated to participate because they don't feel like they have all the knowledge that they need to actively participate. And so, we're building that. We have a couple of parents that have been there every week since la, or every time we meet, not every week, every time we've met, and we're trying to build that capacity. It was very, just about a week ago, or maybe two weeks ago, one of the moms said, "I have somebody who's interested in coming, I've been telling her about it." So, I think that's how we have to build it. A, a lot of our parents don't feel that they can really actively participate and have something to contribute. But the way that we're structuring it, I'm hoping that they will feel like they can be a part of it.
Okay, thank you.
I have one. I have to say that when you start doing these, and you start with schools that have larger Title I populations, it always makes going through the budgets a snap because you're all very accustomed to dealing with Title I monies. It's when schools don't have that kind of money, and they're trying to spread it around, that, that you get some creative budgeting when you're, when you're going through the single plan. So, in terms of, of connecting student achievement to the budget, it's, it's pretty straightforward, and the, and the format makes it pretty straightforward. I have a Swiss cheese question for you. You indicated that you're going to perform a time audit to determine the essential content that can be addressed in the amount of time available for instruction, and you touched on it, but, you know, in essence, it's, it's filling holes. How, how do you go about doing the audit?
Well, it's a matter of making, or not making, but asking teachers, making teachers, asking teachers to look at their practice, to see how much time is actually spent giving the appropriate instruction, not times and transitions. Because right now, in construction, in a construction zone, I can see kids, the bell rings, and five minutes later, they're getting into their classroom. Well, hopefully, once the construction is complete, that won't be, that won't be a problem. But looking at how they're using their time, are they using their time to discipline students in the classroom? Are they using time that's not really directed to stu, to student learning and teaching? And I think we're going to find some real significant time loss there.
So, the method really is a self-audit?
Exactly.
Okay, okay. And then, you know, we didn't talk a lot about, haven't talked a lot about specific scores except in, in broad sweeps, but the summary page that you included on your English Language Arts, oh, no, it goes on to math, I'm sorry. It looks like there was a markedly better performance in grade four and in grade six. And, I mean, I don't know if that says something about your grade level teams at that, those levels. I don't know whether it says something about the students in, you know, who comprise those particular classes, and I don't know if there's a strength there in your fourth and sixth grade.
In math, is, is that what you're speaking to, in math?
But also in English Language Arts, yeah. It's okay.
I would, I would definitely say we have some very strong and committed team members. I can say that they don't all do things the same way, and that was what surprised me. Because typically, when you see these kinds of games, you're thinking that they're all.
There's a grade level team that's hard at work.
Right.
Right.
And, and yet, I was actually surprised because their methods are very different, but yet, they got the same results. So, you know, as an administrator, you want, especially in, and, as an administrator in these times, you kind of want your grade levels, your individual teachers to work like the, the rest of the grade level team.
Right.
But in, in certain situations, that may not always be the best thing, so.
And, and I made a wrong assumption. I assumed that there was some kind of horizontal teaming that was going on that could be replicated in a vertical sort of way, but.
I think what it comes down to is very high expectations. I think these teachers have proven to set the bar a lot higher, and the students rose to the occasion, which makes me very proud.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation and for your patience dealing with your construction. I know that hits every school that it's the good news and the bad news. You get to have a great thing at the end, but suffer through it when it's happening, so. I have a couple of questions. You mentioned walk-through training, and you italicize it, so it's obviously a particular program. And I hadn't seen that before, I guess I missed it. So, can you just quickly explain where that comes from and how, how that will differ from what you've already done? Like, is it more times in the classroom?
Well, it's actually a training that was provided by the County Office of Education, and I forget the woman's name that presented, but she was very great. Susan Villa, Susan Villa. And, and it was something that Robin had brought to our attention last year, and I didn't attend because it's like, I don't have two days to give. And yet, after hearing about Robin giving me some more feedback about how I could get into classrooms more often, because it is a concern for me that I'm not in classrooms as much as I need to be. And so, when I spoke with Robin at the end of last year, I told her that that was one of my goals, and she mentioned to me, you know, "Well, maybe you should take a look at the Susana, Susan, Susan Villa training, walk-through training." So, I did that, and I signed up, and actually, Ms. Alzina also attended with me. And basically, what it is, is an opportunity to go into classrooms in a relatively quick amount of time, so about five minutes, a five-minute visit would allow you to look at the, you know, what's the engagement level? Are kids engaged? Are they off-task? Are they on-task? Looking at the curriculum that's being instructed, is it, are they, are they getting standards-based instruction? Is it standards at their grade level or below their grade, grade level? Because sometimes, you know, teachers have to go back and reteach some things that these students should be knowing. Looking at the instructional strategies that the teachers are using, you know, how are they engaging the students, what kinds of questions are they asking them? What are they asking the students to do? How do we know that they're actually learning? And then, looking at the, the classroom environment, particularly safety. Looking at, you know, is everything okay? Is there any concerns that could impede student learning? Looking at bulletin boards, making sure that, you know, what you see as far as the instruction is actually evident on this, on the walls in the classroom. So, it's a, it's a, it's a very quick approach to going into classrooms because, you know, you can, I could stay in a classroom, you know, an hour, two hours. How many classrooms will I be able to visit in the course of a day, in the course of a week? But this process allows you to get into a variety of cla- a week? But this process allows you to get into a variety of classrooms. I, I can get into probably almost all my classrooms in one day, if I use this approach. And then, the best part is then following up with teachers. Not by just saying, "Hey, here's a little note, good job, liked what I saw," but actually getting more into, "Why did you choose to do what you're doing?" Um, getting teachers to begin to reflect on their practice, which I think is, as Sally mentioned, very crucial. For teachers to think about why they do what they do, and are, is what they're doing actually getting the results that they want. So, I, I really thoroughly enjoyed it. I can't, I have to admit that while I was doing, you know, finalizing my plan, I didn't get into classrooms nearly as much. But now that conference week is over, going to have some assessment data about students, I'll be able to go in and really see what's going on.
So, how often, what's your goal for getting in and doing, because I'm assuming these are in a, over and above what you would be doing for teacher evaluation?
Exactly. This is not related necessarily to evaluation. This is just to go in and see what's going on, and to kind of monitor how students are doing.
So, do you have a goal for...
I, uh, my goal right now is to go into classrooms at least an hour a day, um, and scheduling it into my daily calendar.
So that you're hitting all the classrooms a number of times during the year?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I would love to be able to say that I'll be in every classroom at least two, two to three times a week.
Great, okay. I just wanted to comment, uh, to Ms. Rodriguez, that I was on a, a little sort of mini-walk through with, uh, John Beckio this morning at, uh, Santa Barbara Junior High. And one of the things that was also really interesting is the principal and the, and the school site itself can identify particular areas that they want to be focused on. They, they were, for example, looking at wait time after questioning. So, as he was walking through, he was actually look, looking at when the teachers were asking questions, were they allowing sufficient wait time for the students to answer? And so it was, it was, it's a, it's a really nice approach, because you can be very specific about what you're looking at in any given, uh, visit, rather than the typical...
Right.
...observation where you're trying to observe a whole bunch of things all at once.
And I've been with principals doing the same thing over the years that I've been on the board. I just didn't know there was a ti, a particular training program associated with it, and I just wanted clarification. But thank you.
Yeah, that's what...
Another question about the grade-level teaming. I know over the years with Gerald Anderson Program, and, you know, you've been focusing your teachers on working together and looking at different areas, you know, really aggregating the data and talking about it. How, you mentioned in your goals that you want to do more of that. And you talk about facilitating, well, developing a structure for grade-level meetings, so that student time on task is not impacted. And then following that was the bi-weekly grade-level meeting. So how is that different from what you've, I'm just wondering how that is different from what you have been doing?
The model in the past was to hire substitutes to release teachers, so that we could meet as grade-level teams. Well, that, if we're trying to, you know, improve what's going on in the classrooms, and really maximize the student learning time, well, then taking their credential teacher out of the classroom doesn't really make sense. So for me, I think the hardest part, and that's why it's, it's developing new structures for teachers to collaborate, looking at, how can we do this off-hours, off-school time, you know, after-school hours, maybe, you know, providing some kind of incentive, or leadership stipend, or something for the grade-level teams, so that they can meet without impacting the school day. Um, or putting other structures in. Again, now that our campuses, our student enrollment has decreased so much, you know, I have three to four grade-level teachers at, uh, you know, three to four teachers on every grade-level team, which is much more possible to create other structures, as opposed to when I had five and six grade, six teachers, five or six teachers on a grade level. So, in that respect, I think our, the way that we function will be much more effective. And there will be other ways of, of allowing teachers to have some, some release time, possibly during the school day. But I'm trying to move away from that, and have the grade-level teams meet with me, schedule after-school meeting times to meet with me, and to discuss student achievement.
And sort of related to that, um, well, as outside help, and I was trying to find your numbers of like reading, um, your, uh, reading teachers, and maybe other special teachers that you have coming into the classroom to help the kids. I see that you have a partnership with CELUS also. And, um, do you have interns or student, UCSB graduate students that come in and work with your kids? Do you have a partnership set up to do that?
We don't. We don't have a partnership with UCSB at all right now, for anything. Beyond the STEEP.
Is that possible for us to do with any school site, or is it just each, I mean, how, what are our, our possibilities there?
I think probably the possibilities are there for any school that contacts. We, we work with CELUS, the Center for Educational Leadership. And Carol and, and Juanita both have the RTI Model STEEP, which is out of UCSB as well. And there are, um, graduate students with that program that are actually working with the schools, but not specifically on reading intervention. And, and working with the kids necessarily.
Right. They're providing, they're providing training to our teachers to implement the program. So they're actually coaching our teachers through the program. Um, but they're not working individually with at-risk students at this point in time. There is one person, and she's, I don't know how long she's going to be working with our fourth-grade students, but she, as part, as part of her research study, she's working with our fourth-grade students in the RTI Model. So she will be providing them with some support, but it's a short-term support. It's not for the duration of the school year.
It seems like a nice way to supplement what we're able to purchase through categorical funds, is having all the, we're so lucky that we have the university right there. So, I was just wondering if you have plans in the future to try to expand that?
Uh, it's always a possibility. It's just, again, making sure that you can coordinate it, so that it's an effective use of time.
It is time.
That it's an effective use of their time as well.
Yeah.
Just a quick addition to that, and I know we're gonna start running late, we already are probably. I know that the, the new dean, Jane Connolly, is restructuring the Gavert's Research, uh, Graduate School. And, um, her notion is to have different instructors, professors be also PIs, or pro, uh, prin, principal investigators, for different, um, centers, like CELUS, but for each one of several different areas. And she is just incredible with her outreach to the schools. And she's involved in many different ways in our schools, primarily at Harding right now. But I know that out of that restructuring, we will get the benefit of a lot more support with graduate students in different focus areas.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, before, I'm sorry, before we finish up. Uh, Dr. Noel's questions. There was a question I forgot to ask you. I'm gonna interject it here, because I think it's a quick answer. Um, you, in your focus on, uh, your school leadership, you identified that one of your goals was to establish a vision for Franklin School, involving all the staff and parents. You included a vision statement in your document. Is that the, the vision that you had identified as your plan to, to create, or is that what is currently in place, and you're still planning to create a new one?
That's what's currently in place.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And develop a new one.
I just have a couple of, of things. Um, just listening to you talk, I get, I get the feeling of a school that's not really together. Uh, and I, you know, uh, I don't have anything, uh, to offer that's constructive in that, but I get, I just hear it, between the lines and with some of the lines. And, um, you know, I don't know what, what that's about, but, uh, but it does sound like a problem. Uh, I'm happy to see you're doing, using Waterford. Uh, I was first introduced to that by Nancy Channaga at Bennett Q. School in Inglewood, quite a number of years ago. And they, they were having enormous success with it. And of course, it shows in the, in the performance of that school, one of the, uh, high flyers in the state. Uh, so I'm happy to see us using that. Uh, I wanted to address, uh, a question of collaboration time. And that really kind of flows from my first comment.
Okay.
I almost, I, it's almost a, it's really a district problem, maybe. But why we don't, or how can we fund, uh, uh, more collaboration time? You hear it so often, that it's one of the key elements, and the research shows, I believe, that, and, uh, uh, you know, it costs money, I understand that. Uh, it sounds like it's ad hoc a little bit. Some schools are able to do it, others not. And, uh, if we, you know, if I were sitting down looking at a, well, what, how do we organize our, our priorities for spending? Uh, that would, I would think that'd be a contender. And, um, and I, and, and in your case, it sounds almost like, uh, maybe, maybe a, a retreat kind of collaboration time. I don't know. I don't want to go that far. And, and my last observation is, I was gonna save this for last, because I don't find it anywhere. I don't see any, I don't see any lottery, general unrestricted lottery funds in these documents. And I don't know where the lottery funds are. I've looked at that.
I saw it in there.
Where are they?
It was, it was, a number of people used lottery funds for instructional materials. I saw, I remember seeing it in Harding.
Unrestricted? I didn't, I mean, I...
Oh, maybe it was restricted. You may be right.
And, and, you know, I've had a dispute with, about this, because the unrestricted lottery funds, uh, as I read the, the statute, uh, really are only for instructional purposes. And, and I don't know how this has been, uh, I didn't have time to read that document. It sent me Dr. Sarvis, but, um, but at least about a year and a half ago, a lot, a lot of lottery funds were going to, for contracts, for, um, grounds maintenance, a couple hundred thousand for rent, for a couple of schools. And, uh, I just, as I, as I see needs, and I, I think particularly, for example, just one, the idea of paid collaboration time. Uh, just wondering if that might be a possibility to fund that with unrestricted lottery funds?
Well, and one way to fund collaboration time is through our Title II monies, um, which is what, how I would intend to provide my teachers with that opportunity to collaborate. So, that is definitely something that I wrote into my plan, as far as using those monies to do that.
And I don't, and the other thought I had related to that was that, that, uh, whether that's something that maybe should be on our agenda about contract negotiations. Uh, I, I don't know.
Actually, that's, we've talked a little bit about that in, with, with the union. That, that's a big discussion. Um, but specific to our title funding, our Title I for professional development, and Title II, that is a funding source for collaboration. We do have our district-wide collaboration that the principals have given up staff meeting time, so that their whole staff, I mean, across the district, we're having all the kindergarten teachers at one site, and first grade, talking about really targeted issues. But at the school site, where it's really important for our grade levels to get together, there's a number of models where they, it's going, it's happening ongoing. Some of it's supported by categorical funding, some of it's supported by teacher release time. And there's just lots of right answers about how to do that. Something that I haven't really shared with the board yet, and not even so much with principals, we've kind of alluded to it. This year, last year, we kind of collected our notions about what was going to make the biggest impact on student achievement, and what kind of professional development could we provide for our teachers and for ourselves, and the district as a whole. We started out with CELUS. We moved into a really big initiative around ELD. We've added AD, AVID. We've continued with our site leadership. Next year, and for years going, I see it that we've put the big push, the forward, you know, um, approach with getting the information out there. But then a lot of our dollars from the district level and the site is going to go into supporting that. We don't want to just keep piling on new things all the time. We've got the information. We'll continue to update. If new research comes out that supports something else, and we need to get more information, we will. But we're developing a foundation of understanding around our kids' needs. And so, the funding that we get as a district and site can very much go into more collaboration, more work vertically and horizontally across the district to support that, and just continue, stay the course. I mean, research tells us just to keep the course. When you, you, you know, there's lots of right programs out there. If you want more information about the lottery funding, would you, Michael, would you like to address that, as far as the restricted or unrestricted sources for that?
Well, in that we've spent time researching that in the past, we would like Mr. Gonzalez to comment on that.
I, I, I think I'll, I'll share with you, Dr. Noel, uh, that there is an agreement about the importance of lottery, uh, of collaboration. There's no doubt about it. And, uh, I would share with you that every single categorical program will support collaboration, including lottery monies. It is a question of every, of the district and every school site choosing how they're going to fund the collaboration. I would not want the principals or the board to believe that it's for lack of money at the present time. It's a, it's a question of deciding what is the, uh, best use of existing funds. That's the best answer that I can give you.
Well, are the, are the, are the principals given a, an unrestricted lottery budget every year that they made, make those decisions from?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
No, I, no, I just, I don't know where, I don't see it here.
Can, can I ask, Mr., I don't know...
It's not part of our categorical funding. We don't consider it. It's not Title I, Title II, EIA, but it...
It's a developmental plan.
Let me go back. One of the clarifications I want to make for, for the board, the, the principals well know this, is that, um, the consolidated application that brings the bulk of categorical funds do, does not include the mechanism that we call lottery funds. It's a separate fund. And so, um, that's the only clarification I want to make. There is a number of different, what we call categorical programs, that are not part of the consolidated application. Uh, but there's the new block grant that combined, uh, what we used to call library funding, instruction materials funding, save-school funding. It's not part of the consolidated application, but it is an additional source of money. Like the lottery is an additional source of money. So, so again, I, I just need to stress to all of us that it's not for lack of money. It's how we choose to focus and spend our, our funds.
Well, that, I'd like to, uh, clarify one thing, because, uh, we rarely hear an administrator say that the lack of money is not a problem. And I think we should, I make it clear, we're not talking about the general unrestricted budget.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification.
Public out there, we're not talking about the unrestricted general fund. Uh, we're talking about federal and state funds that are, that are given to the district to give this, to campuses, to supplement, uh, the state budget, the ADA-based money. And, uh, and I, I guess I would just urge, uh, that a template, this template maybe, or some template, ought to include lottery. Because I, I get questions from constituents, "Well, what's happening to lottery money? How is it being used?" And, uh, it'd be nice, it'd be nice, as long as we're here, sitting, evaluating how we're using supplemental funds, uh, lottery money, it also controlled by the, uh, the supplement, but not supplant rule. And, uh, everything except that you don't ask for it in the same application, it makes it, it's pretty much the same as categorical money.
That, and that gets a little bit back to our struggle between the whole plan, what really goes on. I mean, we have gate funding. We have lots of different activities and funding sources. I mean, not a whole lot, but there are additional ones to what go in here. This is directly aligned to the LEAP and CONAP monies. And so, it is limited in that respect.
Question for either Mr. Gonzalez, or, or Dr. Sarvis, or Ms. Sowoski, regarding, um, scheduling time for collaboration. It seems to be a feature of the secondary schools that they, I, I mean, I'm not making any accusations here, but that they seem to be more creative, more flexible. And I don't know whether it's because they're so used to dealing with very complicated master schedules, that they seem to come up with more ways to do it, different ways to do it. Am I off-base, or, and would it be useful if they do have those kinds of skills, to try and share some of those skills?
You know, it's always useful to talk about how you did things. And I, I think that's an important point to make. Having come from the secondary, you know, being an administrator in secondary, it is easier in some respects to schedule those. A lot of schools actually, and I don't think this is the case in our schools right now, but a lot of schools have content-specific teachers at the same prep period. That's hard to do.
Right.
Because you gotta schedule kids. But some do that, they do it around teams. And that's a little easier to do.
Right.
So, um, yes, they're familiar with that, and I think they have creative ways. Their schedules are very different than, than ours. And they have such specified kinds of activities they're responsible for, that, you know, many of our teachers have to go to the IEPs, not that they don't.
Right.
There's just fewer people available on an elementary site that need to be at those meetings. So it makes it more difficult to work together. But they find ways. I mean, our teachers informally have lunches together all the time as grade levels. Um, they meet after school, they'll meet on a Saturday, they'll, you know, so it doesn't, that kind of thing you can't force, but it does happen.
Thank you for the reality check.
I, I had one last thought about the collabora... I, I had one last thought about the collaboration.
No, I'm just curious what the cost of a buyback day is. What's the total cost across the district? I, I mean, I used to know the figure, then we got rid of those days, and I don't know the number anymore.
We've actually thought about, well, but we've had some conversation in our meetings about taking some of those staff development days up front and spreading them out throughout the year.
Right.
We're even aiming for maybe one next year.
Or what's the cost of adding one?
Great. And, yeah, and the cost, I don't, I'm not going to quote that.
And it wouldn't necessarily, as you say, have to be one day at the start of the school year, it could be spread, you know, one day per quarter, but I'd be interested in the cost of one of those days.
I just did, and completely off the top of my head, calculation came up of forty thousand dollars.
Oh. That just doesn't seem like...
Now, we'll get you more information on that. And I may be off by forty thousand dollars.
Oh, you mean, it might be, it might be zero.
I don't think so. Good luck.
Well, I'm randomizing the error, Dr. Sarvis. Let me, let me just say one more thing about collaboration. We had a marvelous and inspiring presentation by some young high school kids the other night at a board meeting, and they, what do they call it? Cramit or List Cram? Yeah, it wasn't Cramit, was it? Anyway, it was, it was absolutely terrific, and it was a collaboration tool. And I've also wondered why, you know, what we could do, there are so many tools out there, listserv is the simplest, threaded discussion groups, they go on, people are in and out of them at their convenience, it could be grade-level team at a, at a school, it could be district-wide grade-level teams, it could be structured with an agenda, it could be unstructured, it could be, it could include subsets of instant messages, it could have a whiteboard, just, the, the possibilities are really quite extensive. It used to be, this was, the first time I made this speech was about eight years ago, I think, no, no, six years ago, and it was considered absolutely blue sky. I don't think that's true anymore. This is, this is real, the technology is here, here too, maybe, you know, my guess is it would take a lot of hand-holding to get it off the ground. Maybe you're looking at me like you already do it. So, anyway, I would like to see, I would like to see some, some commitment to, to try to, to give some technological support to, to collaboration if it's not, if it's not already being, being done.
And that would be great as long as everybody's online and able to access the internet, and we're moving in that direction. I, I still have a couple of classrooms that don't have internet access. So, I mean, granted, they could go to a computer lab, they could go to another room.
Or from home.
Or from home if we, if they choose to do that. But again, you know, it's about having the infrastructure available too. Can I respond to Dr. Noel's first comment, though? I would like to respond to that. I appreciate your reflection on my presentation, and what I'd like to say is that I, I do see a lot of great things happening at Franklin School, but your point was well-taken. It does need to be structured in a different way, and it needs to be organized in a way so that we can see the effectiveness of it. So, I appreciate your honesty, and I appreciate the fact that I will be working on that and making sure that it is a cohesive, a cohesive operating body and that we do see, see results. Because I do believe that there are a lot of great pieces happening, but it's how do we structure it so that we see those bottom-line results?
The synergies aren't there, the pieces are there, but the synergies aren't there.
Exactly, and we're moving in that direction.
Yeah, thank you for your...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Quick update after doing a little more math, and it's pretty simple math, it's not, it's not looking at the Y-intercept of the inverse of the proportional variable of, I see I'm off by about two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I was going to say...
How about, how about two hundred forty thousand? That's what I'm up to right now.
Yeah, it sounded really, really accessible.
That is really excited there for a little while.
Put, put it online and use time at home. Can we have a break now?
I do want to point out that we are about a half hour behind in our agenda so far, which is, anyone who knows us knows that this is not unusual. So, I'm sorry, Dr. Noel, you're requesting a break now? And then come back for our...
What about a shorter break?
Yeah, I was going to suggest that too. Let's take a ten-minute break right now then, and we'll come back.
That's seven for five, but ten's good.
Well, let's take a ten. We'll come back, Ms. Carney, and we'll come back to you and give you a little breathing room before you get us to reconvene so that we can get back a little bit to our schedule. And we're running behind schedule, but we know that our kind principals will understand. We will resume with McKinley School.
Yes, we will. And we have with us Dr. Juanita Carney, who has been longtime principal at that school, presenting the school plan for McKinley.
Good afternoon, everyone. As you are well aware, we are a PI school, our third year, and I, and perhaps some of you may remember, last year I was hoping that although we had the distinction of being the PI school for the elementary school district, we did not wish to have any other school join us. So, hopefully, the two schools that joined us will do everything that they've said that they're going to do and get out of PI very, very quickly. We ask ourselves each year what we can do better, and the main focus that we want to address is our English learners overall. As you probably are aware, we jumped from eleven point one percent to eighteen point five percent of our English learners being proficient this past year, but it was not good enough. And we really feel, and I particularly am very passionate about this, I am so pleased that this district has moved ahead to mandate that all classrooms, all teachers will instruct ELD as a foreign language for certain minutes each day. Because as Carol said, we talked about the holes in the Swiss cheese, that resonated with me. I loved her comment about making it into cheddar cheese. I hadn't thought of that, so that was great. I do believe that that has been one of the problems that we have had, particularly with our English learners. I think that, as I have told you over the years, we have put many, many programs in place. RTI started last year, we've had our High Point Program. We've looked at many ways that we can improve the achievement of our English learners. The, what is very, very true about our English learners, as mentioned by my colleagues, is they can speak, they can, they can speak English, they can read to a certain level, but they're not getting to that academic content. And it is because, I do believe, that, of the holes in the English language development. As I've been explaining to parents, I've been explaining the ELD program as English being taught as a foreign language, and that's a different concept. If we think about language as a foreign language, then you're talking about the listening, you're talking about the speaking, but you're talking about the grammar, you're talking about the mechanics, and that leads you right into the writing component, which is the most difficult of all of the acquiring of a foreign language. And to have a student be truly an academically proficient student in English, they have to have all four, they have to have the listening, the speaking, and the reading, and the writing. So, we have taken that under our wing, we have really, my teachers have worked feverishly hard, we have spent a lot of time planning, and as of November sixth, the entire school population, every single grade level will have a specific period of time during the day that they are going to have dedicated English language development, and it's going to be taught by the credential teachers. So, I am inviting you all to come, give me a call and say, when could I see second-grade English language development? I can tell you precisely the, the, the time of day that this will be, be going on. I have to give credit to Basha Milholland. She was one of the people, well, she's the director of Selus, and she is a good friend of Susanna Dutro, who you've heard, that has been bringing the training to our district. Well, Basha had worked with Susanna over the years and is a very good friend. And so, I asked Basha to come and work with the McKinley staff to help us look at what we needed to do for English language development, what we needed to have in place so that we can plan to, to implement it well, and what kinds of materials did we need. And so, she's been meeting with the staff once a month, and she will continue to meet once a month. So, I really have appreciated her help. So, the main focus is, is really ELD. A secondary focus is certainly the reading achievement, but I wanted to take a look at it in a more focused approach, and we wanted to look, we're going to really spotlight third grade. Because if you've taken a look at, at the data, you will see that in third grade, the reading achievement has been pretty static, and there's a definite falloff from second grade to third grade. Now, we have been told that this is across the board in the state of California, but this is not helping McKinley School get out of PI. So, I contacted, through Basha, I've contacted Dr. Margarita Gonzalez, and she's going to be working with myself and my third-grade team to look at the kind of assessments that we're using, similar to what was mentioned by Sally, and see what disconnect there is. Because I have to tell you, I have a super hard-working third-grade team that has looked at the open court, they have matched the standards, and seen that there's some open court material that doesn't necessarily lend itself to standards, so they've said, okay, then we've got to find materials and assessments that more closely match the standards. They've done all of that, but it wasn't good enough. So, what, what are we doing? And so, this year, what I think is so different from the other years is we're asking for outside help to, some, some people to come in and give us a fresh, a fresh eye. We're open to it. Basha particularly is highly supported by the entire faculty. Margarita is a colleague of hers, and she will be too. So, I really think that that is going to be most, most helpful to, to our, to our faculty. The data analysis, of course, is, is very key, and I know you've heard from the other principals that, as I explained to Robin and Brian at a meeting that we had one day, is that teachers, as, as we all are, we have different strengths, and certainly data analysis is something that every teacher needs to know. Whether all teachers are the superstars in being able to analyze data, no. Do we need to educate teachers to be able to analyze data? Yes. And so, that's what I'm hoping to do. I want to have, bring everybody along. I had one of my teachers say, after, it was actually Davis, was presenting the data to the staff, she said, I just had an epiphany. This all makes sense to me now. So, I mean, those are the kinds of things that we need to see happen with all of our teachers. You know we have passionate teachers in our district, and we need to give them more tools and more time. So, this, I think those, those are the, are the key, the key things that I wanted to present. I could go over my executive summary, but I, I would like you to turn to page 10 of the electronic school plan, because I think it, it capsulizes very nicely the school goals for you so that you can see them just right at a glance. And then I can tell you in more specific detail the way the categorical funding is related. The one thing about the, the electronic plan, you do still have to turn pages to find where the budget is, but on every, on every goal, you will find, on the description of specific actions, you will find the, the funding sources. So, I'm going to summarize those for you on page 10 so you don't have to flip back and forth. On the English language development, and by the way, Cynthia with her, I mean, she was wonderful as far as, as technical support for me. I tried to have the, the goals prioritized the way I would like them to, but the, the plan did not lend itself to be prioritized or ranked, so that's why you see health coming second. That was not, that was not the way I prioritized, that was not the way I would prioritize it, but it just, it just, it's just the alphabetical as, as Robin is stating. So, the English language success, fortunately, Basha Milholland, because she has a contract with the district, comes at no cost to us, which is fantastic. So, we are putting monies in this area from Title I in particular for teacher meetings, and this goes to Dr. Noel's discussion with Carol about collaboration. It is extremely important for teachers to meet and collaborate. So, we're taking money out of Title I for that. And then, we are using monies from the ELAP for materials and for a translator. One of the things that is, for our school site council, we only have one parent that is an English speaker, and so, I'm having the entire school plan translated into Spanish because otherwise, how can my parents access the plan? So, we needed to put money in for things like that. In the reading language arts, here again, Dr. Margarita Gonzalez was at no cost to us because she is also under contract. We are continuing with our reading support teachers, Title I. They, they will continue with their small group reading instruction, but because they are credential teachers, they also are going to be involved in the ELD instruction. So, what, what that helps us do is to create smaller groups for ELD. And so, as you know, we're going to have, at different grade levels, we're going to have different, different levels. All of the students were assessed with, it's called the Express Assessment, and so, all of the, all of the children have been assessed to, to a level. So, our reading support teachers will help us out with that, along with doing their, their small group instruction. We are going to continue with our Rosetta Stone Lab. This year, because we're fortunate enough to have Waterford for grades K through two, we're going to concentrate the Rosetta Stone Lab on grades three through six, and they're going to have more days in the Rosetta Stone Lab. So, that's going to be most, most helpful too. And then, we, we will continue with our Homework Center. We have, daily, we have at least forty children in our Homework Center. We have a super Homework Center Director that makes sure that it is a learning environment for children, and they are receiving help with homework. We just went through the parent-teacher conferences where every parent had your district policy homework guide, and parents were asked to sign that contract along with the teachers and the student. And I participated in fifteen conferences as a translator, translator myself, and so, I saw that done, which was wonderful to see. And parents are very behind homework. We do not have any problems at our school about, my child shouldn't be receiving homework. That's not a problem for us. We also are taking money out of Title III in this area for grade-level meetings and conferences. We have the materials, and then we have our instructional assistants are coming out of this area too. Parent involvement, we are very fortunate to have, and I, I think that Norma Perez Sandford, I believe, Jan will say, was recruited by Santa Barbara Junior High. She came to our town hall meeting that we had in June where we were concerned about the gang activity that was happening in, in the Lower West Side, and we had a wonderful forum. We had police officers, we had, we had probation, it just, just a great, great forum. Well... Well, Norma Perez Sanford spoke. I was so awed by her presence and her charisma with the parents and talking about, her program is called Sin Gritos, without yelling. And I said, "Would you come to McKinley School?" So we have had her, she is midway through a 10-week session with our parents, and they think she is fabulous. She comes from a background of migrant parents. And she's passionate about informing parents. And she asked me if I had, if there would be an opportunity, if she brought some parents to a school board meeting to present to you. And I gave her the dates, and she said she was going to speak to her parents to see. So you may have a group of McKinley parents come to speak to you about the program. But she does this just on her own. So from the Title I Part A money, just $2,290 for a 10-week session. I mean, it's phenomenal. So that comes out of there. School climate, as been mentioned before, we, over the years, have always felt that we needed more time for our counselor. And so we have always added to the district monies so that our counselor is with us four days a week. And then our psychologist is also four days a week. So we have, we have the counselor is paid through Title III monies. And then the parent outreach, which is our family advocate. And then we took it very seriously when Brian talked about the board-focused goals at the beginning of the school year. And I went back to the staff and talked about them, that attendance had to be key for us. And so we are actually funding one extra hour for our office assistant to make those phone calls to parents, to be really up to date on the letters going out, to make sure the incentives are going out to the children. We started, I mentioned it in the plan, a contest for children to name a bear. That's called Larry the Bear. And he gets to sit in each classroom for a week for perfect attendance. So I did put a goal in there, that we want at least a 5% reduction of the unexcused absence rate as compared to last year's data. So those are just, and then the health, there's no money attached to that. That's the Too Good For Drugs curriculum that we have. And then finally, as the other two schools have mentioned, we have not had a problem with math. We definitely want to continue with that to be proficient. And so we do, we still will have instructional assistants that will assist one-to-one or small group after the lesson's presented, if someone needs extra help with understanding division or something like that. So we did put money in there. And then overall, I just want to say again to you that I do believe that my staff is passionate about learning. They really work hard. And one of the things that I will continue to do is to support them. The morale is good. I mean, it is hard to be a third-year PI. And we're getting closer, but we're, you know, it's just kind of like, there has to be something that pushes us up. And as I mentioned before, really, the focus has got to be on our English learners. And then we have to see what's happening with third grade. Because if we can find out what's happening with third grade, that's going to transcend to all of the grade levels. If we can figure out this connection between instruction, standards, and how the students do on the achievement test. So I'm open for any questions or comments.
You know, Steve being the middle or near the end is easier, because, you know, the same questions have all been asked.
Yeah, and I really thought, and I told Sally, I thought that she did a great job of, and I was telling Carol, too, is because there's similarities between the schools, you'll hear that many of the same things are being done. And that's because we are looking at the needs of our students.
And obviously, I don't need to reiterate my questions about, you know, formative assessments and school attendance and all that sort of thing. But I think that you are wise to bring in a fresh pair of eyes, because the context is probably right. It's about nibbling at the edges of the context, you know, to create the big difference that you're looking for.
Right.
Yeah. But I had a question, two questions. One was about, you have down here that you have a county expert advising the 4-5-6 team in ELD lesson planning. And I'm just curious what kind of support they're providing.
Well, that was something that Robin offered. And I will be bringing her in, her name is Marta Serna. And Marta was, for those of you that may not know her, she works with the county. Before that, she was a principal in Galita. And before that, her child went all the way through K-6 to our school. So I've known Marta as a parent first. And so, and my teachers know her. So as we get more into the ELD, then I want to bring Marta in to be able to walk through with me and go into the ELD classes and to see how it's going. And then she can, you know, she can say, "Well, Juanita, why don't we, you know, why don't we sit down with the 4-5-6 team?" Because they do the High Point teaming, they're doing the ELD at the same time. Because it, not every High Point class is going to be exactly the same ELD class. But they've been collaborating for so long that, you know, she may say, "Well, let's, when your 4-5-6 team meets together, you know, I'd like to come in and share some observations." And so I've let them know that that will be happening, too. But it hasn't happened yet.
Okay.
I want to add a little bit about Marta. Marta has also offered her services to Carol and Sally. And Marta is a trainer with Susanna. She was there with us in August. Susanna's brought her in because she recognizes her, you know, excellent skill and just, she's good with groups, too. So she's training with Susanna, so that will support that ELD, the systematic ELD. Marta also trains at the county on PSYOP, which is Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol, specifically looking at classroom instruction and the lessons, and if there are language objectives for every lesson. And we had teams work with her last year at the county. So it's kind of bringing all that training together. And she'll be available for working with the three program improvement schools and others if they want.
And also, Ms. Swawsky will be bringing to the board a report on the ELD implementation. And it's a little bit different on every single campus, yeah? Okay. Okay. And then the only other, it's more by way of comment, on page, it was a page that you included and no one else did. I'm not sure, you know, what form you were using, but it's page six. And it shows per pupil expenditures. And it was fascinating. It was really a useful piece of information.
Well, this, what I used was the electronic plan that was presented. And I have to say, it was difficult to do. But I was so far along in it that I chose not to, I chose not to change over to the other format that most of the principals use, because I had put so much
Time and effort.
Time and effort into it that I couldn't even bear to think about doing something, going back and doing something else.
I liked having that kind of information, so thank you.
You're welcome.
There's a lot of different pulldown options you have with the electronic version. And so that's why you'll see some differences in some of the plans. And the ones that didn't use the online version, you can tell at the bottom if it says "generated by Academic Accelerator." That is the exact online. The others were created with a Word document template. It was taken from this, made into Word, so that you could manipulate it easier for this presentation. Where, as Michael said, phasing into all using it. Some of the people here, or maybe not even here today, have it online, but they also made the presentation form in Word. But they actually have their plan online as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now that we're talking about that table, excuse me, is, so it's $11,111 per student?
And you know, and I have to say, this is a form that was already inputted, I'm assuming by the district. So I really didn't have any latitude with some of these pages.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Because right next to it, there's a column, "Average Teacher Salary", which is $11,111. But that number, I thought, was interesting, because we do have a lot of discussion in our district over time about what some of our neighboring basic aid districts spend.
Let's describe how we get that.
Okay.
There's two forms that are available on School Plan Online. One is the Single Plan for Student Achievement and what we call the SARC, the School Report Card. That particular page is a SARC instrument, okay?
Okay. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Question about Waterford?
Yes.
Because you've been at this a little bit longer than some of our newer schools have been, with the exception of Cleveland, who's been doing it for much longer.
The granddaddy.
And I just wanted to see what your feedback was,
I was a kid when it started.
What your feedback was so far, because you're a little further ahead than the rest of the new schools that are starting.
I'm really excited about it. I mean, every single kindergarten, well, one of the, unfortunately, one of my teachers in kindergarten has been ill. But the kindergarten classes will be, I have two of them right now, and the third one will be coming. They are coming to Waterford every single day, as is every single first grader and every single second grader and our special-day population. And it's just great. And I have to really give credit, and I think I gave credit last year, to Skylern, one of our SES providers, that provided to us all of the hardware. Because we could not have started that Waterford program without the hardware, because our lab is a Mac lab.
We're facing that problem.
And so we, you know, I had told them at Waterford, there was no way that we could have started without this gift of having it. And it's just wonderful. And I recommend you coming and visiting us, too, and watching the kids with all their little headsets on, and so engaged. And then we will have the Waterford, the SES provider will be starting in a week. And they'll have it again, many of those same children will have it again in the afternoon. So they're going to get two doses each day.
Yeah. So I think Mr. Vale has indicated that he saw an increase in reading test scores as a result of Waterford. And so are you optimistic?
I am, I am.
At least for the K through, I realize that third grade is the trouble area, and that's not a Waterford level, but...
But we will have the Rosetta Stone for those English learners, because the Rosetta Stone is targeted for our Sells' Levels 1, 2, and 3. And I've told the third-grade team, because we're fortunate, I asked Bob Zio, who is the Skylern person, I said, "I would like to have 40 in one room, so I could have two classes go in there at a time, so that I could get all of my primary kids in there in the morning." And that's what's happening. And so what's lovely is I can have two teachers in there at the same time. And one teacher can be rotating, we also have this reading support teacher in there. And then they can be taking little, small groups of kids after they've, you know, after they've had their required minutes, let's say. And they can be working with them, you know, in a little, small group. But it allows for the schedule to work, because time is so crucial. I mean, that's what you will hear teachers say, "There's not enough time to do what we need to do." And so that was so great, he was able to put in there 40 stations for me.
Great. Just one more quick question, that you have the Preschool For All program at your site. And are you doing similar integration, sort of the pre-K to 6th grade linkages and integrating the curriculum?
Not as much as, I was really interested to hear what Sally had to say. I really have not done as much of that. I know that what's lovely is that, you know, many of the families that are in preschool for all are still our children, although there are some families, which was the target, is to bring other families in. But for the most part, many of those families are our families. And so they receive the, you know, all the parent communications and things. But as far as the collaboration at the level that Sally was discussing with the university, we do not have that level of participation.
Well, we're hoping that that might bring some of the families, or encourage them to stay at the school as we move forward with our fee-based preschool that we're trying to get started at the school. And I was just going to be interested to watch what happens at McKinley to see if some of those families do, in fact, stay, because their kids have made a bond there with the staff.
But certainly, whether it's preschool for all or state preschool, just having preschool on campus is such, it's so great, because those families come and they sit at the tables and, you know, talk with one another. It's a very family atmosphere that certainly is with us in kindergarten. But now it's starting, you know, even earlier with younger ages. And it's a real community builder, definitely.
Well, thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Carney, I appreciate very much your presentation.
Thank you.
I don't have very much to add. I just, there's so much talk about Waterford. Aren't we beholden to some very, very kind and generous donors for that? And maybe the superintendent would like to make a plug, explain to the public what we got and how grateful we are.
We certainly are. This is a donor who normally likes to remain anonymous. They allowed us to use their name on the occasion that we were going to other people and saying, "Hey, this donor gave us $850,000, but that didn't buy everything. So here are the other pieces that we need." And we do use that name at that time. But it's very much a result of the generosity of this community.
So what's the total come up to now? You start with $800,000 from one donor?
And then you upgrade computers and, gosh. In this case, by having Skylern come in and provide the computers, I don't even know what that would amount to in dollars and cents.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, I mean, I couldn't even, I mean, I don't really know how we could have gotten Waterford off the ground.
But I would guess that that's probably another $40,000, $45,000 right there.
Or at least, at least, probably more.
Well, that is really noteworthy. And I know we all celebrate it, major contributions to the elementary school program from donors.
Yeah. And the training, the training, too.
I wish we could say who it was, because we all owe a debt of gratitude. I also, the other comment is really not specific to you. I do like the calculations, I'm glad you persevered.
Thank you.
The, I just think in general, it is so much easier. And what I'm looking at here, you know, I've spoken out about what I felt to be the misuse of categorical funds in the past. And I look at this and I see responsibility right down the line. It's clear, here's the goal, here's what we're going to spend, here's the categorical budget that comes out. If I read that and I see, is there any misuse of categorical funds that I can see in here? And I have an eagle eye for these things, as you know. And I can't see it. And I think that is so commendable. And I think to you, Robin Swawsky particularly, and to each of you principals.
Well, thank you very much. But I also have to thank Cynthia White, Dr. Cynthia White, and Michael Gonzalez for helping us find this school plan online that really forces you to lay it out. We were not inappropriately using title funds, you know, categorical funding. However, this shows you exactly. So it really makes it much more public, and you can see the intentional use of it. Thank you.
And thank you, all of you.
Thank you.
You've had some changes in your population, or has it been pretty stable?
Well, as I was telling to Lynn, for the first time in our history since we started McKinley when we were small, this is the first year we've we started McKinley when we were small, this is the first year we've had three kindergarten classes.
Usually you have?
Four. And so I was explaining to Lynn, I think, I've mentioned this before, about young families particularly, not being able to settle in our communities. But something different that happened this past year is we had two apartment houses remodeled, and, and they wanted to attract, I believe, probably more of the Santa Barbara City College students, and so they raised their rents. And so many of our families had to move out of those apartment houses, and they moved to Santa Maria and other places. So I don't know if there's going to be more apartment houses that this happens to, but this definitely affected our attendance this particular year. I don't think this is anything that anybody could have predicted, because this just, you know, we started to hear about it in June, and I thought, well, they can't really evict people, but they were if they could not come up with this higher, this higher rate. So we have lost families, you know, because of that, but also because of the families that serve, that we serve are the families that are coming after the lower income jobs that can't afford the higher rates. So the population is pretty much the same, except we have reduced numbers of students at our school.
So it hasn't changed the characteristics of their populace?
No, the demographics of the school has not changed.
But you've had changes. I mean, there's been a gradual decline for a while, but this sounds like a little bit more so.
Yes, absolutely. It really, it really caught me by surprise, and I think, as Carol mentioned, I think we as a school and as a district are going to try to be, you know, look more closely at that, so that we won't have those surprises, because we thought we were going to lose two teachers. Fortunately, we only had to lose one, but it was, it was very demoralizing right at the beginning of school, anytime this happens.
You had to change teachers and grade levels and...
Yes, and then collapse a kindergarten class and move all of those little kindergartners that had already, you know, bonded with a kindergarten teacher, and move them to the three. And parents, parents took it in stride, but it was difficult.
Let me add to that as well. And as you know, even though it's only three weeks into the year, that's still a significant transition in the life of a kindergarten student.
Yes.
Our biggest enrollment, we study this carefully and watch it closely. Our biggest enrollment drops this year were at McKinley, Franklin, and Cleveland, and this is part of the facility's master plan study as well. Trying to predict where those are going to go is going to be important to us.
This also had an effect on your third grade team as well, I believe.
Yes, yes, it did.
Which is a pretty critical team.
Yes, yes, it did.
I'm curious, I have a couple of questions. You had the, you said that you increased the time of the psychologist and the counselor. How do you use the counselor and the psychologist?
Well, I didn't increase the time of the psychologist. That was already a district, district decision. We've had, we've had our psychologist for four days for the last two years, and that's been great. The counselor is, is used to work with one-on-one students and then small groups, and then since we're just concluding student-teacher conferences, there is always an influx of referrals for counseling, particularly from teachers and parents that are asking for services. And this is really critical. I do agree wholeheartedly with Sally and Carol that the academics of the student is so important, but we, the emotional needs of the students must be addressed, because many of the students come to school with, with so much on their minds that we have to have a way for them to learn some coping skills. But that's why the parent ed is so important, and we want to empower the parents to understand how they can work with their children without yelling, having appropriate consequences, and what can they do. And I read the evaluations that they do at the end of each session, and that's what they're constantly saying, "I learned some new ways of listening to my child and disciplining my child," so it has to work hand in hand.
When you said that ELD was all at the same time in the classroom and given by the teacher?
It's at the same, it's going to be at the same time for each grade level.
I'm sorry, yeah, grade level.
Yes.
I'm curious, is it just the teacher then focuses on the ELD students or the whole class? How does that work?
Well, for, for our school, you're really talking about the whole class, except for maybe one or two students. So those one or two students that are EOs, those students will have, they will have their own contracts to do, they will be doing some other work that is more accelerated or will broaden some work that they're already doing. We have found, and I think that this is, some of the students, and I think you've heard Michael Gonzalez talk about this, the students that were identified FEP in kindergarten, fortunately, the district is, has looked at that now and said that to identify a child in kindergarten FEP just on their oral skills is not really a good practice, so we've done away with that. So we are looking at our FEPs. Those FEPs were given those express exams. The majority of FEPs did not pass out of advanced, so those students are going to be receiving the ELDs, the ELD. It's truly, it's truly the proficient, the EOs that will not be receiving. So for our, for our school, you'll go into a class and it'll be a full, it'll be a full class.
And one last thing, I'm curious, what is Rosetta Stone?
Okay. Rosetta, Rosetta Stone is, it's interesting. It's a program that's, that's kindergarten through adult, and City College, I believe, uses it.
I've heard of it.
And, well, I'm sorry, not kindergarten through adult, first grade through adult. We use it, have used it first grade through adult. Rosetta Stone can teach any language, any lang, as a foreign language. And it is a program that you are put into, and you go through lessons. You have to, at our school, we say you have to be proficient at eighty percent before you can go on to the next lesson. If you do not have eighty percent, then you redo the lesson. It starts very simply with pictures.
So worksheets?
No, it's computer.
Computer, oh, okay.
Computer, the headphones, the whole thing. We use the Rosetta Stone with our adult C-Bet class, and I forgot to mention, we also are going to have our C-Bet parents use the Waterford, too. So we're going to do dual things. They love, parents love computers. They just love it.
And your hippie program comes in there, or they're using the preschool ones?
They're using the preschool, they're using the preschool. But the Rosetta Stone, and that's, I have a director, and she's paid out of categorical funds to do the Rosetta Stone, and she provides reports. There is a report, you know, generated by the computer that lets the teachers know how the children are doing, and that's presented at conference times to the parents, too. So that's another, another assessment tool that we have.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I was also going to ask you to explain Rosetta Stone, and since you did, I have a question, since you said it can be adapted to teach any class, any language as a foreign language.
Yes, you just have to purchase the program.
Could, could the EO students use it while the other students are getting instruction in English?
No, we would have to, we would have to purchase another foreign language.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was a major purchase that we made several years ago, where we purchased the program, and, and we've been using it since then.
Okay. The other question I had was, do you have any partnerships with Santa Barbara City College?
Yes, well, they are, they are our partners, and they, their student body funds our Student of the Month luncheons that we go. And then we are also from the Sylvia Cortez, from the EOPS. She's constantly telling us about cultural events.
I know you come on campus a lot.
Yes, we do. And that's through, through our partnership.
Are there any partnerships with, with any programs that would provide students in the classroom or things like that?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Our PALS, our PALS program, gosh, this goes back to, I guess, our third, our third year at, my third year at McKinley School. I proposed to City College to have tutors come over, and Bill Cordero approved.
Who I know very well.
I know. Bill Cordero approved of that, of that plan, and at, at the time, we were doing fifty percent funding. And after some years, when, when he saw how much the Santa Barbara City College students were getting from coming over and being tutors to our students, and thinking about education as being a, a possible career, then Bill was able to fund it through the work-study program. So when the PALS tutors come to us, they're fully funded by work-study.
Great. And now that we have the education program on campus, has it provided any, I mean, there's now the classes for students who are interested in going on into education, has it increased that participation, or has it remained relatively static?
The PALS, it's, it's pretty much, it's pretty much the same, and of course, we appreciate, and I, you know, on a personal, we appreciate when you send students from your class to come and sit in on our upper-grade classes to see what the children are being instructed, and so that's a really nice synergy.
Good. Thank you. I also just had one other question, and you kind of touched on this, but I was wondering if you could talk a little, just say a little bit more about the difference between teaching ELD, or what difference it makes to teach ELD as a foreign language?
Okay. This, I think, became so clear to the teachers for the first time, because in the past, and teachers, to their credit, would say, "But I do teach English. I do. I'm teaching English all the time. I'm developing vocabulary. I'm, I'm giving, using Realia, so forth and so on." What Susanna made very clear is that, that is, you are still teaching reading, but you're using strategies to teach reading or to teach math. When you're teaching ELD, you are teaching to the subject of the English language, and you are looking at the forms and functions of the English language. And that is what's so different, and that's why I just picked up, well, I'm just going to explain it, that we are going to be teaching English as a foreign language, as a subject. Reading is a subject, and you use, you use, you use strategies to help the children access the reading. When you're teaching ELD, you are, the subject is English as a foreign language. And that's, that's the way I'm trying to make it clear, particularly to the parents, because I want them to understand that that is a huge focus for us this year.
Great. Thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
I think that's a great idea.
Good, thank you. Okay, and just on one final note, I invite you to come to our carnival tomorrow, your mess, from twelve to four, and if you'll excuse me, that's where I'm going now, just to make sure that the last-minute preparations are complete.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Then I think that brings us to Cleveland. And we're, okay, we have... We're still about a half hour behind, so we haven't lost any more time, at least.
Oh, Mike can talk really fast. So we have Mike Vail, principal of Cleveland Elementary.
Well, I've been known as a fast talker, so I, but I'll try to give you some good information about our school.
But believe me, it's not the principals who are causing us to be so late. We tend to be, we tend to like to ask lots of questions.
Good. Well, you know, typically, we start out saying, "It's a, it's a pleasure to be able to talk with you." It really is, though, because I don't get to tell you all this stuff, but just about once a year. So I, I hope that I'm clear and that, and I'm going to leave plenty of time to ask any questions you may have. I want to thank all the other principals, too. Elementary principals do act very collaboratively, particularly when we come up on, on, on big reports and things like that. But we share information, and this is just listening to others. You can hear people sharing programs, sharing specialists, sharing ideas that are coming across. So it's not just on, on these reports, but I want to thank Cynthia, I want to thank in particular Sally Kingston for, for helping out with formatting things, and not a particular strength of Mike Vail, that's for sure. I'm going to talk, I'm going to talk about student achievement at our school, I'm going to speak to specific initiatives or goals that we have, and the initiatives that are attached to those. But I hope that what, what becomes clear, that underneath these goals, what makes these, these goals pertinent, what makes the, ultimately, what makes these programs effective, is a developing professional learning culture at the school that focuses on and develops specific structures for analyzing student needs and then responding to those needs. If we don't, if we don't do that, all the programs, all the hardware or software in the world isn't going to make any difference. So I hope that that comes out, out of this, and if it doesn't, please ask me questions about it. We too, we have three, three points of emphasis, although if you look into our plan, you'll see that there are actually five. But from an academic, straightforward academic standpoint, we too are looking at the achievement levels and language acquisition levels of our English learners. We're looking at the overall achievement of our students in the English Language Arts, and we're looking to continue the, the progress that has been made by our students in mathematics, particularly with an emphasis on the two sections of the California Standard Test that pertain to skills within that concept of number sense. But we're also interested in our school climate, and a climate that, that is inviting and supportive, in which all the stakeholders in that community participate in this endeavor to find out what needs children have, try to support them in meeting those needs, make school a place that children want to be at, and that can be successful as well. And finally, children need to be in school if, if school's going to be effective. We also have fiscal needs. We know that children bring money with them, and so we'd like to maximize the number of students, both from an achievement standpoint and from fiscal responsibilities, the number, the percentage of students that attend school. Our attendance rate is, is, is good, is good in comparison to other, other schools in the district. We can do better. We think that we can reach ninety-seven percent. It's a small increase, but we think that we can continue on, on that line to have students at school on a regular basis. If we have time, I can, I'll comment on some of the reasons, I think, and you probably know some of those reasons, why I think that we continue to not maximize, currently not maximize attendance at our schools, and particularly at Cleveland School. In terms of achievement in general, you know, if I came to you in nineteen ninety-seven, I'd be standing here saying that, or sitting here saying, "Well, this year, on the very first standards test in California, our school achieved in the high four-hundred range." This year, I'm able to say that Cleveland students, as a whole, achieved an API rate of seven hundred thirty-eight. That's significant growth, okay? If I came to you in nineteen ninety-seven, I would be reporting to you that on the very first oral J that was ever given to Cleveland School students, fifteen percent of them read, in kindergarten, read at grade level. They reached that fiftieth percentile ranking district-wide, fifteen percent of our students. For the past three years, ninety percent of our kindergartners have reached grade-level standards, and this past year, and it's been, for the last two years, it's been between sixty-five and sixty-six percent of our first graders are reaching those levels. Significant growth over, over, over a period of time, but I can still remember it. I can remember it coming to you. I used to sweat a lot more with those numbers. And so, and in the area of mathematics, as a school, our students on the California State Standard Test, fifty-five percent of our students this past year, up one-tenth of a percent, but nevertheless, fifty-five percent of our students read proficiency levels in mathematics, okay? In the area of science, in the area of science, there is much work to be done, but we see growth. We see growth. We see growth. This past year, thirty-six percent of our fifth graders reached the proficient level, thirty-six percent. When we compare that to, to Latino students in Cleveland School is, has a, a population, student population that is in the range of ninety-five percent of our students are Latinos. The average is somewhere around, around fifteen to twenty percent of the students pass or reach proficiency levels. Thirty-six percent of our students reach proficiency. We're proud of those. I, so I ran into Dr. Noel and said, "Oh, boy, I can't wait to tell you some, some numbers." But those are, what that tells me, though, is that still two-thirds of my, of our students have not yet reached proficiency in, in fifth grade. So if I turn that around, you say, "That's not a very good number." But we can see significant, very, very significant growth in the area of science. If I were to add basic, the basic level of, of achievement to science, it would be in the area of seventy, over seventy percent of our students are achieving basic or low, or higher in science. So we have some good news in terms of growth, but, you knew the "but" was coming on that. Our English learners still continue to struggle. We believe, as Doc, as Mr. Gonzalez has pointed out, that we are still, we're not reporting correctly the, the actual achievement of the English learners, that we have students who were, were identified as fully English proficient as kindergartners based on an oral test, and that, that this isn't a, a, a true measure of their language acquisition. What that means is, is that in essence, our high English learners are not being reported as English learners. They've been pushed over as, as fully English proficient, as if they were English-only in, in that respect. We don't use that as an excuse. We just made our goal of twenty-four point four percent. That means that, that by and large, English learners are struggling. Okay? We believe that we have programs in place, but that are initiated at the district level, as well as at the site level, that are attending to the needs of English learners. But I reiterate at this point, it is that underlying, those systems and that, the attitude of the professionals at our site that says, "What are the needs of individual students? And what do we need to do for students and, as well as groups of students to improve their achievement?" I think that are, that are important. We had, as I said, about a third of our students, this past year, over thirty, thirty-two percent of our students in the English Language Arts reached proficiency levels. That level, that percentage of proficient students is largely conditioned by the difficulties that our students have with comprehension and vocabulary, issues that are areas of achievement that are directly related to, to language acquisition. So we are both applaud and are very thankful for the initiative on the part of the district to provide ongoing training to teachers in English language development throughout the year. Not a one-shot thing, where I'll come into the building and learn all about English language development and go back to the classroom, but throughout the year. And that's the type of, of professional development that's going to be required. But more is required, and it's built into the initiative, and that is that teacher leaders will then support teachers at, at each site. As they come in, they say, "Gee, that sounded all good, but how do I, can I, how do I translate this into, into practice?" Or, "I've translated into practice, but I still have questions. Who can answer those questions?" Who can best answer it? Teachers that are at that site. They don't have to make a phone call away, they don't have to go anywhere, they're, they're right there. So that is built in to a very systematic approach, in much the way that the board directed us to, to, to approach English Language Arts, in terms of looking at English language development in a systematic, frontal way. Teach it every day, have, with strategies that have an evidence-based record of, of success. Provide ongoing support to the professionals, or those classroom teachers that are going to deliver those services on an ongoing basis. That's what made our Language Arts program so successful, and continues to make, is we had long-term professional development for our teachers. In addition, at the site, we look at, we look at, at comprehension. One of the pieces that has been missing, and it's not missing, it's, it's there, but has not been particularly effective, is the writing component of our Language Arts curriculum. And we are working with a group that's had success in both Colorado and Northern California. It's called Step Up to Writing. It is not a program to supplant. There are strategies, much in the way that our English language development is, strategies for taking the right writing components, for taking the, the literature that we have in our core Language Arts program, Open Court, and applying in a systematic way from kindergarten to sixth grade, strategies for teaching children to be able to express themselves in, in a coherent fashion. And that gets progressively more complex over time. That is directly related to the California Standards for, in the area of, of writing. So our teachers have already worked, and if you, I invite you to come to our faculty meeting on, on the seventh. They will be following up on a, a how long? A six-hour, two-night workshop. As you know, Cleveland School with its, with its continuous learning calendar has the ability to offer professional development, not just at the beginning of the school year, but throughout the school year. We do it in the evenings, from four o'clock to seven o'clock. We did two nights on Step Up to Writing. And we will follow up with grade-level planning sessions on the seventh to say, "Okay, we've got this information. How are we going to build this in to our instructional focus calendars to be sure that writing has a place on the curriculum, instructional learning table throughout the school year? Where will we start? And what would be the specific strategies that we'll focus on each quarter of the remaining in this, in this school year?" So that is happening to us, is happening right now. In the area of, of mathematics, number sense is, these two categories are, that are, I don't know, they're not a hodgepodge, but they, they, they focus on arithmetic. And, and to be able to do the arithmetic, children have to develop number sense so that they can move beyond digits on their hands to understand how numbers relate to, to one another, be, whether they're working on addition or, or multiplying fractions or looking at probability. So, and I would take that probability off the table, but they have to have the, this number sense, that's another section in there. But they have to have that. And, and we are working with UCSB, with the name, with Dr. Bill Jacobs, not just with Bill Jacobs, but with, right, but with other mathematicians there to work on number sense, and get some eyebrows. And, but we look at these as tools, as tools that teachers can bring back, they can discuss with one another, they can, and they can try out, and if they don't work, we're not going to use them. This is not dogma, these are, these are tools. We have other initiatives that are, that are underway. We've talked about, about support systems in English Language Arts. This is our fourth year with a program called Waterford Early Intervention Reading Program. We have a unique system that, that operates at our school that integrates this tool into the core instructional day. It's not an add-on, it's not a pull-out. Our teachers come to the lab, and they work alongside a credentialed teacher in that, in that lab setting. In essence, they bring their class to it, and they teach portions of Open Court there, but in that, in that setting. But in addition, students are receiving individualized instruction on, on, at computer stations, and they are getting a follow-up lesson from this credentialed teacher who is trained in, in Open Court. What our children end up getting through, through this Waterford tool is what we've been looking for, we always had wanted with, with the Open Court tool, and that is time for teachers to be with students in small numbers so that they can diagnose student needs, so that students have optimum number of repetitions and ability to participate, to try out their, their language, and that we, the information derived from those, those interactions informs teachers about what they need to do to help those students that need, that need more help. On top of that, it provides individualized instruction to every, to every student. Every student is able to walk in and their picture comes up, and they, we get a profile on what they do on that day. We get a profile on what they do that week. We can see them by quarters, I can see them by the year. Not only does the lab teacher have it, the grade-level, the grade-level partners, and we consider the lab teachers, we have two of them, we consider them members of the K team and member of the, of the first-grade team. They release with them, they plan with them, they share information with them, they co-teach with them on a daily basis. And we think that this enhances what we're able to do, so that we no longer have this discussion that we used to have at the end of the school year, where I'd say, "Okay, kindergarten teachers, how many readers do you think we have?" And they'd go, "I got, I have three, I have three, I have two." Now we say, "How many students still have we not reached? After all of our efforts, have we not reached that need additional support during, during the coming school year?" And they will come up with, "I might have three, I might have two, I might have three." That's a, that's flicked on its head. It is not any silver bullet. It is an enhancement of the Language Arts program and the professional community paying attention to what children need and then responding to it. Not with obituaries that says that little fulano doesn't, doesn't know this, and then we just move on, but that we say, "He or she does not know this, and now what are we going to do about it?" Our calendar also helps us to respond because we have, because of the way time is structured at our school, we don't have to wait until summer to respond to those needs. We don't even have to wait, it's, although I don't want to get out of, out of sync on this, we don't have to wait. We can respond on a quarterly basis to the needs because we have intercession. We have intercession periods that follow, vacation periods that follow our nine-week instructional periods. As teachers analyze how students are doing and looking at the interventions that have been provided, when those interventions continue to be unsuccessful, they can say, "These children need this, this, this," and they can place them in intercession, they can give them this, this, this. There's a direct alignment between what students need and the instructional program. And we can do, we can respond in a more, in a more rapid fashion to what students need. Our calendar helps with that greatly. It's not the only answer, but it helps with that. The way we use instructional time during the day helps with our continuous learning model. We can say Gerald Anderson, we can say Brazosport. What it is, is a continuous learning program in which the professional instruction, learning community says, "Here are our goals." We plan for those goals, for what we want children to learn. We deliver those services, and then we analyze how students do. We reconvene and we look at how they've done, we analyze that on a weekly basis, not a monthly, not a quarterly, not a trimester, on a weekly basis, with grade-level teams that have release time to do specifically that task. Then we plan interventions to help support them, and we deliver them on a weekly basis. So we have this, this cyclical planning, delivery of instruction, analysis, and redelivery on a regular basis throughout the year. And then our calendar helps us to pick up kids that they still didn't get it. They still didn't get it. So we, we believe that the, the successes that we've had can be attributed to the planning, delivery, and assessment, again, systems that are in place at our school. We have to make sure that we're focused on those students that still continue to struggle. Those are our English learners. And while we believe that the data, if, if correct, and we're going to have to live with it now, we've corrected it. As a district, we've corrected it. In sixth grade, I have, I have twenty initial fully English proficient students, twenty in sixth grade. They will be counted as English-only students in the tests. In kindergarten, I have zero. There's no difference in the population. It's just how we assessed and then recorded, recorded the needs of students. So I, I believe we're making progress. There's still work to be done. I'd like to open to myself to any questions you have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, maybe I left something out.
Dr. Noel, we'll start back down at your end if you'd like.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Vale. I want to point out that Cleveland is the only elementary school in the district that has a similar school's rank of ten. And, and I want to commend you and your staff for that accomplishment. To me, that's one of the most significant variables, significant measures that we have because of, as you know, it takes into account the demographic composition of the school. And it says, "Given your demographics, you're doing as well as can be done." And, and then I, then when I hear you striving for more, I say, "We have to raise that scale to eleven for this guy." And, okay, that's good. I like that.
Having said that.
Well, yeah. And I just want to say, not to minimize your accomplishments, because that, I mean, those accomplishments, too, but I just want to say, it's not as well as can be done. It's as well as anyone is currently doing.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I'd love to show you, I, I never get a chance to put the regosup scatter on the, on the, on the overhead, Dr. Sarbas. Someday, schedule that for the board, will you, Leah?
It's on the agenda.
But it, it lays out your point very, very nicely, and it just, it, it, it shows what can be done and what can't be done. And these tens are darn good. They're darn good. The, but I'm not, I'm not a demographic determinist, so I want you to know that. If we were back two years, we'd, we would look at our whole elementary district, and we would find that, that overwhelmingly, our elementary schools met the goal that we've set as a focus goal of a similar school score of seven. That is also an accomplishment, and it reflects well on all of our, of our elementary schools, almost all. And the two that it doesn't, I will add quickly. The two that it doesn't teach you a wholly different philosophy and, and a wholly different assessment philosophy. So it doesn't say the, the whole picture by any means about those two. We raise the expectation, our hope, when we change our focus goals, from a seven to an eight for a similar school score. And one, two, three, four, elementary schools are eights or nines. So the district, and I think, think we have to put this in perspective, our elementary schools are doing a good job, given who we are, as, as a population, as a community. And, and I just, again, commend you on that ten. And that's all I have to say.
Go ahead. I have a couple of questions. It sounded like you were going to talk about how do you raise attendance and-
And I didn't do it.
I want to hear that.
Well, we think, we think that by and large, our, our attendance is, is actually better than, than average within the district, but I won't say anymore about our calendar. But, but we think that where, where we tend to, where we have difficulties, all the schools have difficulties. They have it during the winter break. They have it right around the winter break. And wherever we put the, wherever we put it, it could be two weeks, it could be one week long, two weeks long, it could be three weeks long, the, what we are seeing is people being absent at the front end of, of the vacation, people being absent at, at the back end of, of the vacation. I don't have a, you know, a great huge silver bullet, how we're going to do this. What I'd need to do is I need to raise the consciousness of our school community about this. This is a phenomenon that exists. And we know that a lot of our parents are traveling long distances. They're not, they're not going to carpentry for Christmas or for the, the holidays, winter holidays. They're traveling two thousand miles, twenty-five hundred miles. So I understand that, but we, our calendar provides that. We provide a time to be able to do that. We also know that, that in the service industry, boy, you don't get to just name, "Okay, I'm going to be gone on, on this date." A lot of that's dictated to you. A lot of places just shut down in manufacturing during, during specific times. But if, if we can work with individual families that, they typically come to me, and they ask for permission. And I say, "I can't give you permission, you're, we really need you to be here." But if I can be upfront and get people in the second quarter of our school year, our second session of our school year, to get that word out, so that it is something that people are talking about- to get that word out so that it is something that people are talking about. To go to a very influential group that we have at our school. Last year I referred to it, but I didn't refer to it here. It's in the body of, of the report. We have a daytime class for C-BET, okay, that's sponsored by City College, Adult, Adult Ed. So all those costs are, we thank the, we thank City College for that. But we have up to 36 parents on a daily, on a daily basis. Now, we're under construction right now, so that number's down to about 20. Because it's happening over in the cafeteria. But we're, we dedicate a space to those, to those parents for English language acquisition. We do it though, because we also want them to be, we want that, that service delivered at school so that those parents know more about our school. They're out in the classes, we have them out. We want them to know, which is the, one of the, the, the objectives of C-BET. We want them to know more about the school system so that they can be more effective. We think it's being very effective. Who are the PTA leaders right now? They come out of that C-BET class. They come out of the C-BET class, right? Who's on school site counselors? People that are coming, that step forward. Why? Because they, now they understand more about the school. Now we're not so frightening. Now it's not foreign experience. They understand what's, what's happening. So they can be effective at that level of interaction with, with the schools. So going to a group like that, which represents about, you know, probably more than, it's more than 10% of our, of our families. Because we have lots of children, we have children, multiple children and families. Those people can be those, those tipping agents, those, those tipping people that can, that can talk with four people. And suddenly, suddenly we've got 100 people that know about this. So I think that's what we're going to try to do. What we are doing this quarter or this session is that we're trying to get the word out about how important regular school attendance is. Particularly around winter holidays. That was a long answer for.
Would it be substantially different for you to start school the same time as the other schools have, still have a year round calendar, but start a couple of weeks later?
If you look at our attendance, and I think we have those figures available, if, if we look at our attendance by month, our initial, you might think, well, the people don't come and they kind of dribble in over, over the summer. That has not been our case. We do get some uptick, but, but it's not, it's not a very large number. Because we now have almost a generation of people that this is just their normal calendar. So the people who are repeat families, they simply know that, that the second week of July, school starts, right? So our attendance, I don't believe, to answer your question directly, I don't believe that our calendar has a significant impact on summer attendance. That would, that would drive it, drive it down. Having said that, having said that, we also, for the first time in, in, in 10 years, we lost a kindergarten class. Lost it. And that has not been our pattern. Our pattern has been that parents would come in, they would, they would settle in, in the community and place their children in, in kindergarten. They would oftentimes be living with, with a lot of people in the, in the home. They might be sharing home with, with another family member. And then more children would come along and somewhere around second, third grade, it'd simply be untenable and they start moving. And they start moving, looking for housing that has the space and, and, and the cost. Again, the average cost of a two bedroom apartment on the Lower East Side is around $1,800. So, so they would move out in those, in those middle, middle grades. And then we would watch people hop out and go to Lompoc, Ventura, Oxnard. For a while it was Vegas and we haven't seen it for a while now. But that, that was a significant moving area. What we saw for the first time this year was that we, the K's didn't materialize, right? And so it, it raised our consciousness about the fact that we cannot simply assume that people are going to come to Cleveland school. That we have to be very active in going to mediums that can, that can, of information that, that our community participates in, that accesses. So we, we need to do a better job of getting them. Are they just sitting in the houses? No, I don't, I don't think so. But I think that we being more active in recruiting parents, not at the detriment of any other school. We can increase those numbers. I also think that, which is outside of my purview here, but I think that we can, it is possible perhaps to manage attendance between schools on the Lower East Side. So that we have schools of the size that we want. We may not want schools that are 550 in the elementary level. We may want schools that are closer to 500. We may want some of our schools of choice to be able to grow, have the capacity to grow. Those kinds of strategies could manage the number of students that are at each of the East Side, Lower East Side, side schools. Simply by working with incoming, with the families of incoming K students to place them at, at, at schools. That are essentially next to one another, contiguous to one another.
My last question is about the Waterford Lab. I'm, I'm not, I'm asking lots of questions here. The Waterford Lab is that you have only like 10 computers. Is that correct? Something like that in your lab?
Yeah, we have seven.
You have seven? And I, I like your model in that, that the students move around and it gives time during that process. It's a very different model. I don't, I don't know that it's a question, but I just thought I'd, I'd ask that.
It's different in that what we're trying to do is, is achieve very focused instructional settings with small, small student teacher ratios. And we look at the computer as the teacher there. So we go from one, one to one on the computers to one to six or one to seven in our instructional groups. So we're getting instructional environments in which students have lots of opportunities to participate. They can try out their skills and teachers can diagnose who knows what, okay? If I'm in straight rows of even 20, that student right over there may be doing, may be doing this with me. But I'm, but how many chances do they have to participate, actively participate? How many chances does the teacher have to really know what they know to do? So these, these settings are what we're trying, we're trying to get there on a regular basis.
I like the model. Thank you so much.
And we're going to, we've been invited to go to the Water, Waterford Best Practices Conference to share what we do in February. And then in March to their executive council meetings that made up of, of superintendents nationwide.
Just an observation after having gone to the, the, I don't even know the name of the committee, the, you know. Waterford Implementation Committee. Probably my biggest concern right now is that, that these other schools that are acquiring Waterford are able to embed the program as heavily as you have, as opposed to just add something on to their day. And, and a lot of the, I mean, you were there, a lot of the questions centered around that. And I think that those schools will need your leadership in order to embed the program in the way that Cleveland's embedded it.
I appreciate that. What, ultimately what they're going to have to do though is they're, they are, and those schools are, asking questions about what do their students need and how can they use this tool to meet those needs? So while I think we can serve as, and I agree, I think that, that what has been, what is ongoing development at Cleveland can be a model that they can pick and choose from, but ultimately they're going to respond to the kids that are there and the, and the staff that they have and.
Right, right. And make it their own.
So, so that it isn't just a, something that's plopped down.
Right. A question for you or for Ms. Swasky or, or Dr. Sarvis. It's about the Oral J. And actually, I was going to ask about this and then Mr. Vale brought it up at the beginning of his presentation. And the difference between, you know, the results they were getting in 97 and now. Has the test been refined? I mean, I feel like this is one, I know that we're working on more formative assessments. But I feel like this is one big crack that we have at kindergarten and first grade students. And can the test be juggled to reveal more information than it does?
Yeah, there has been some refinement. I actually asked, last year in our grade level collaboration, I asked kindergarten, first and even second grade teachers about the Oral J to give me some feedback on it. Most of their responses were technical in nature, like on this passage, let's ask this first or that kind of thing. Some schools thought it was too early to give the kindergarten test right toward the beginning. Other schools said, no, that's exactly what we need. We need to have baseline data. There, now that with the schools doing the RTI, Steep Response to Intervention Model, there's a different fluency type of, they call it a probe, but it's an assessment. And we're kind of comparing those two and teachers are asking, do we have to do both of them because we're getting very similar results? So we're playing around with this. This is a question we're asking ourselves. In fact, I've been talking to Davis too. We may have Shane come in and talk with, Shane Jimmerson come in and talk with the, the teachers and the principals about that. So we have questions as well about.
Okay. Great. See, you're off the hook. Thank you.
Thank you, as always, for your presentation. And I was glad you brought up the Gerald Anderson because I've been sort of reflecting on, and for the schools that really implemented that. And you were definitely one of the, maybe one of the first schools to start.
We weren't as quickly as some, as some of the board members would have liked us to, but after we studied it and saw the utility, then we, we embraced it.
And it was good to hear that you're actually still, you know, implementing some of those, those concepts. And I know that sort of dispels the fly by night, try something today and not, don't use it tomorrow kind of myth that people might have. So that was good to hear. Your enrollment is down this year by, I'm just curious.
By a whole classroom.
Just by one class?
By a whole classroom.
So just 20 kids, okay.
If you look at our classes now, we're at 20 and then 20, about 26, I think, on average in the upper, in the upper grades. But it's a full drop in classroom. I had two students to try to build another kindergarten out. Those two students now, who just happen to be brilliant, are now in first grade classes. And a K1.
So in light of the fact that you have a nice, small school, it must be easier for you to do, I'm just following up with the question that I had asked Ms. Navarro's about the walkthrough training and are you able to get out, we were talking a little bit about the amount of time that you can get out and do quick assessments in the classroom, just to see?
It's the only way I know what's happening. I mean, it's not the only way, that's not true. I get printed data from, from different sources on a, on a regular basis. But there's, there's nothing like me being through the classroom on just a flat out, regular basis to be able to know what is happening. Now, we have printed data, we, we create instructional focus calendars. So we, we hold ourselves accountable for what's going to be taught throughout the school year on a daily basis. So that's, that's laid out. And we re, we, we reevaluate that. It's, it's a, it's a living document. It changes by quarter. But I have a sense from the written document of what should be taught. But when I walk in to the room, I can look at the walls, I can look at students, I can, I can look at what the teacher is. And I have a feel for, for how effective instruction is being, being implemented. I could never do outside the classroom. So it has to be a part of what I do every day.
And you probably get to get around a little more just because you have smaller.
Yes. And, and, and I think every principal is going to say, and yeah, I want to do it even more. I want to do it even more. But it is, but it's, it's essential. It's the only way we have. Even if, even if the school were 1,000, it would be important to be seeing what, what is, what is happening on, on a regular basis. We can't, we can't do it from the office.
And my last question is, you had a line about meeting yourself, meeting with the students in third through sixth grade to go over their star results. Is that something new or have you been doing that?
No, that's Gerald Anderson, isn't it? That is, it is, and I'm not done even now. So, but what, what we do is we take our star results and in they come, one by one, to see, to see the principal. We sit down, I have theirs, and we look at it and we disaggregate the data is what we do. We look at it, we say, gee, look at the numbers here. Here's the language arts, here's, here's your math scores. And then here are all the little subtests. Let's look at language arts. Here's your six little subtest. Which of those is the highest number? And they, they can point out, I say, that means you did really great. That's really terrific. Which ones, which is the lowest number? And we look at it and we say, oh, well, and oftentimes vocabulary development, right? And we look at it and say, hmm. So that has got to be something that you're really paying attention to. And I talk about when, you know, when we come through with, with open court or, or with content areas, when those words go up on the board, we got to zero in on them. If we don't know them, we got to know them. This little, there's a kind of a pep talk version or sense to it. But it is looking specifically at that child. They circle it and they carry it back. They put it in their, in their binder and they go back and they say, I have to do better and I'm going to do better in, in this area. It connects students to, to what we're asking them to do as, as adults. In a, in a way that, that is not particularly profound, but it, but it is a, is part of connecting them to this learning process. It also is telling them that adults are interested in them, that adults want them to do well, that adults recognize that they do well in some areas. And there's some areas that, that we want them to continue to grow in. And so from an affective emotional standpoint, I think that it's a real positive thing as, as well.
And you do that, since you're in session, are you in session when the results come out?
We're in session, yeah. We're, it's, August 15th is the magic date and.
You do it right pretty much right away.
The printed materials come out to us typically by, by the beginning of September. I do a little bit there and then the heavy lifting is second quarter.
So that's something all of our schools could do because it's, we're all in session then.
Excuse me, it also says the test is important. And so when they go to sit down and take the test, they maybe remember, I'm going to have to talk about the results to the principal.
And hopefully, at first, when they first do it, they think they're in trouble. Third graders all think they're in trouble, but, but they soon learn that they're not.
I, I think you've really touched on most of the questions I was going to ask you. I just wanted to ask a sort of specific question about the influence of calendar on attendance. And that is because we're asking you a lot of these questions because we are in the, we are currently in the process of looking at calendar. Do you, you talked about having some difficulty right at the start of winter break and also at the end of winter break? That the two ends of that break pose the, the biggest challenge for attendance. In your, in your opinion, does the duration, the length of the break make any difference?
In this case, I, I don't think it has, although we, I think ours is lower. It has been at least, you know, again, we've been tracking this now, I think, for, for three or four years. And so last year, we, it was lower than, than some, than, than many of the other schools. It's still the highest and it tends to happen at all the schools at, during the month. It's that you can look at month seven, wham, it pops up, it pops up right there. But it is the fact that this is a traditional time in which people move around, move around to, to see relatives. In this sense, I think we, it helps because ours is longer. They have longer to go visit. Because they have a three week break to go, to go visit. But we tend to not, still not adhere to when those breaks begin and, and when they end. And we can do, if we do better than that, if we can raise parents' consciousness about that, how it affects their child's education, how it affects the district financially. Then our parents love their children and, and they care about the, their school. So I'm sure, sure they're going to cooperate. I just knew, do a better job of getting the information to them.
Yeah, I was going to say, there, there has to be a different factor at work because our elementary schools have a three week break. And it hasn't made that big of a difference on attendance, yeah.
Where our calendar makes a difference is, 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 as I said, our ability to respond to them. But also that basic notion that if, if a child is away from school for more than about 20 instructional days, there is a precipitous drop off in, in what they remember about school. And it makes the beginning of, of school, when, after those long summer breaks, it makes the beginning of school have to focus, less effective. Because you have to focus on, on remediation, on bringing kids back up, up to speed. And if you come and you watch our schools when we finish sessions, there is no review. They just pick up and go. They just pick up and go there because the kids still remember what they were doing. That's a huge, across the state, the average API and some, and, correct me, but I believe this is correct. The average API for Latino students is 660, for our students it's 730. It's a huge difference that it's made. Is it just the calendar? No. No, it's not the calendar. Does the calendar help us in this endeavor? Absolutely. It's an absolute asset resource to the, and, and there is a connection to the academic achievement of our, of our students. It's combined though with professional teachers who are constantly looking at what kids need and seeing that they have a responsibility to respond to those needs. That's what is making the difference in achievement with our school and other, and other schools in this state.
Thank you very much. I think you're, you're at.
I just want to ask him this one, this is a quickie. What ever happened to Mathland, Mr. Vale?
Mathland, that focused on conceptual development, but was quite a mathematic, conceptual development, but was missed. The component of how do you apply those concepts to, to actual problem solving in ways that others could recognize. Then that's probably, there'd be people. could recognize, then that's probably, there'd be people that'd just say, "That's not what it was about." But I think that that was one of the difficulties with it. What we need is a balanced program. We think we have a balanced program, and we think that we pay large attention to making sure that children understand what they're doing and then have sufficient practice at actual success in problem-solving. When they do that, when you put those two things together, they can be independent thinkers that think like mathematicians, and they do quite well. Plus, our kids can read the tests. They can read the tests.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're ready to move on. Oh, okay. Do board members need to take a quick break before we move on to our last presentation?
I feel bad making Ms. Alzina-
Okay. We will take, but, yes, I don't want to make you wait too long either. How about if we take, then, because we do have a board member who would like to, how about if we just take a five-minute break and come right back? Me Alzina, principal of the Santa Barbara Community Academy, grades kindergarten through third grade.
Thank you. As being a part of the Community Academy since its inception, it's been my privilege to be the principal this year, and serving, you know, from anywhere from PE teacher to kindergarten of first grade, fifth grade, I feel like I truly know where our strengths and our weaknesses are in our curriculum and our school. And I will say, the one constant that has kept our school so successful and thriving is our core knowledge curriculum. I mean, that's the one aspect of our school that has not been touched. And we draw, I think, a different type of teacher because of the curriculum, because it requires so much extra planning time on the teacher's part. You have to have a buy-in into that curriculum in order for it to be successful. So, that has been an aspect of our school that has definitely helped in its success. Also, Mike talked about, a little bit about the year-round calendar. Same thing with our school. I truly feel that a year-round calendar, you know, where the students do not have to repeat or review what they've already learned, that first quarter has just helped in the success of our school. And speaking of success of our school, I'm very proud to say that we met our API growth from 749 last year to 773, and from 714 in our Latino population to 738. So, we're definitely making strides. I also, I was in the process of compiling the information regarding our students that started in kindergarten, who now graduated from sixth grade with the core knowledge curriculum. And I haven't finished getting that data for you, but I can say off the top of my head and giving you a very conservative percentage of students that were proficient or advanced that started in kindergarten that now, that graduated from sixth grade, I would say, conservatively, 90% of those students were proficient or advanced. And that's very conservative. It could be much higher than that, and that's even the students with disabilities. So, our core knowledge curriculum is, that one constant, I can just not reiterate that enough, that has kept our school cohesive and together, and despite us being a split campus, we always come back to that. And that's a great way for me, as an administrator, to say, "Okay, let's focus on what really matters, student achievement." So, of course, we are a split campus, as you know, and something new that we have implemented this year is a free breakfast program for our students. So, all students, kindergarten through sixth grade, now have a free breakfast, and we do feed our fourth through sixth grade students at our campus, and then they get bused to the other campus after they have breakfast. About nine, close to 80 to 90 students out of the 120 on the other campus do take the bus, so a large population of our students do take the bus. Also, in our kindergarten through third grade, we did receive anonymous donation to support a chorus program for our kindergarten through third grade students. So, they are in chorus, starting at 7:25 in the morning, then they go to breakfast. And then our librarian, or we call her our librarian, she has opened up the library to students in the mornings, too, with the parents. So, my striving is, in being an administrator, I want my students in schools as they can be. And so, I'm thinking, "How can I do that?" And so, I'm extending the day in the morning, and then I'm also extending the day in the afternoon. Robin has been so helpful in being creative with our finances, because we do, we're our smaller school, so we have to be creative with our categorical funding. And in being creative, I have tapped into a second through ninth grade uncapped fund, after-school fund, to service all of my students that are basic and below. So, all of my students that are basic and below are receiving after-school tutoring. In the fourth through sixth grade, they're receiving after-school tutoring for two hours after school each day, taught by credential teachers. And then, in the third grade, the classroom teachers do that after school, too. So, we also use some of our categorical funds to help augment the cost, because we want the ratio to be low. We've always strived, that's been our constant, our strive in keeping our ratio low, not only, of course, in the classroom, we like, we have the 21, but in after-school programs. After-school, we also have our own after-school program that we run. It's a self-sustaining program. It serves 60 students on our kindergarten through third grade campus, and where our ratio is 12 to 1. And the teachers that actually teach that after-school program are also our instructional assistants. So, where we use some of our categorical funds is towards our instructional assistants, and we're currently training our instructional assistants in corrective reading and PALS. It's what our special education teacher uses, and I'm going to kind of skip around a little bit, to what her success rate with it has been. I sat down with her, and I said, "I want to know what your students, where they were at last year, and what they are at this year as far as proficiency level." Every single one of our students, except for the student that was special day, went up on proficiency level, every single student. And I gave her two thumbs up. I said, "Way to go," because I know that's very difficult with her caseload. So, I said, "In doing that, you know, more open court isn't necessarily the answer, especially for those students, we're getting a large influx of students in second grade that were reading, new students that just didn't start with us in kindergarten, that came in reading eight words per minute." So, they need that phonics that they did not get in kindergarten and first grade, and what corrective reading and PALS is, it's just phonics, it's phonemic awareness, lots of phonics. But we're training our aides on how to implement the phonemic awareness, because a lot of times, we hire these instructional assistants, but yet, they don't know the letters or the sounds. They don't know how to segment, they don't know how to blend. So, in training those, in training our aides, they came back to me, and they said, "Oh, great, we can do this now after school." Bingo. That's what we want. And so, in doing that, that will also help, because we want every student, regardless of English language, to be proficient or advanced, and that's what our board, school board goals are, and that's what we've aligned our SMART goals to. So, in putting in, being creative with funds, I would say, our self-sustaining program helps that. We have our instructional assistants. We also have a Title I teacher that's in fourth through sixth grade, who is a credential teacher, that does a pull-out for our English language learners, and a pull-out, that are those students that scored ones or twos on their cell test, that works with them 45 minutes each day and targets just specific language, on top of the systematic ELD that they get to. So, they're getting a double dose. She also works with the students that are far below basic and below basic, too. So, we're doing what we can and using our categoricals, again, to target those students that are basic and below. We also, the teachers went to a coherent writing workshop this summer, and they came back to me, and they said, "We want to do this." Okay. I mean, as a former teacher, I've always felt where open court was weak was in the writing component. And so, where we're strengthening that is with the coherent writing, and it's nothing that supplants open court, it's just a program that uses the open court resources that extends the writing process. And I know Robin's excited about maybe next year, bringing it to the district, too. So, and not wanting to give, I think, when you have something great, like core knowledge, you don't want to give too much, you don't want to mess up a great thing, but you also want to target where your weaknesses are. And our weaknesses are English learners, and we are aware that we barely made our goal in our English language learners. And so, that has been our target, is our English language learners, with our systematic ELD, with our Title I teachers, with an instructional assistant, and we're using categoricals for instructional assistant in first grade and in second grade, to meet or to do small, work with small groups with our English learners, so they're, again, getting systematic ELD, but they're also getting small group time. We have a partnership with Westmont College, with Nancy Maynez, a former principal of the academy. Her daughter now goes to the academy, is in first grade, and she's a professor at Westmont College, where she's sending her Westmont students to work with our kindergarten students to target those students in kindergarten or first grade, so you don't have that Matthew effect that you know that if students are behind in kindergarten or first grade, the gap just gets wider. So, we really target those students that are in kindergarten or first grade. And ways that we target them, too, is our intercession. And we use our categorical monies, and again, thanks to Robin, I mean, I had to be creative, because we had hired 11 intercession teachers to service our kindergarten through sixth grade. Well, currently, we have 15 teachers, so that's just minus four. With, we use our categorical funds to keep the ratio low again. So, we keep the ratio 12 to 1. So, we're using our categoricals with this uncapped funds to meet those students that are basic and below. So, every student that was basic and below went to intercession. Every English language learner went to intercession. So, we service close to 200 students out of our 320-student population during our intercession time. And during that time, we had two kindergarten classes, and we had one first-grade class, two second-grade classes, and two third-grade classes. So, you could see, out of those classes, we're really targeting our kindergarten through third-grade population and intercession. And I'm thankful that I have wonderful kindergarten teachers that also taught that intercession, too. So, if the teachers that are in your, that are currently teaching the grade level, they know where their students' weaknesses are. And so, if they can teach, if they're the ones teaching that intercession, it's much more effective than if I bring in a substitute teacher during that time. So, again, our intercession is where we put a lot of our money, and that's something that has been constant throughout the eighth year, eight years of the academy. We've always targeted, we've always said, "We want to keep our ratio low during intercession." You cannot have 20 at-risk students in one classroom and be effective. So, again, that's where we put lots of money. We've talked about collaboration. Another constant in the academy has been the collaboration and grade, grade-level collaboration amongst grade levels, where they meet three times a week. And where we get creative with funds, again, is using our release time money, where for a, we use our release time money to help augment the cost of a PE teacher, along with our PTA helps pay for that, too. And so, during that release time, teachers meet with gray, at gray levels, twice a week during their PE release time, and then we have early release on Thursdays where they also meet. And that's the time where they meet with me, I meet with, when we talk about data analysis, we talk about our scores, we talk about how we can improve student achievement, where are your students? And again, right now, we're really targeting our English language learners. So, I want to know specifically, what are you doing in the classroom to meet, so you are ensuring that each student, each English language learner is going to move up in the cell scores, is also going, is moving, is striving towards proficient and advanced? And I think it's important when you're implementing a new program like systematic ELD, that you give the teachers the constant support, because if you're not giving them the support that, it's easy to say, "Oh, yeah, I'm doing it." And speaking of, "Oh, yeah, I'm doing it," I went to, I went to the training with Carol, the walkthrough training, and I made a commitment to my staff that I will be in their classrooms every single day, as long as I don't have meetings all day long. So, and I have 10 classrooms on the K-3 site, and so, I'm in their classrooms every single day. And also, what I'm doing to ensure, to help with attendance rate, is rewarding those students with perfect attendance. So, I do highlight them on our bulletin board in the office, the students that have perfect attendance for the month, they get a juicicle party, like that juicicle party with me, once a month, and I announce it over the loudspeaker, they get released 10 minutes early at the end of the day, once a month, early from class, and they meet me on the playground, and we have a little juicicle party and celebrate the fact that they were not tardy one day during the month, and they were not, and they did not miss one day of school. So, we're really trying to start, target perfect attendance. Also, perfect homework. I randomly go in the classrooms and reward those students. They never know when I'm going to come. Those students have turned in their homework for that day with a pencil, just a surprise, a treat. It's maybe once every two weeks. They don't know when I'm going to come. But I will say, the teachers have thanked me for doing that, because they say, "You know what? Homework sometimes was a problem, always having to talk to the parents about turning in their homework." And I know, from the teacher's standpoint, you're doing whatever you can to get that homework back. But now, the students are like, "Oh, Mrs. Alzina came in today, and I had perfect homework." And so, now, I'm going into classrooms where every single student has turned in their homework. And that really, that, I know, takes a lot of stress off of the teachers in getting that homework back, and also getting the parents involved with the homework process, because, you know, when you're at a, when you're at a school where the education level of your parents isn't necessarily the highest, it's a lot of times up to the students themselves to have to do their homework and have to remind their parents, "I have homework." So, it is getting the parents involved, and where I'm striving to keep that communication with the parents. Close-knit is by having principals' coffees once a month. I do that, I invite them to my office. And during that time, I educate them on the importance of just reading with your child every day and giving them some statistics, you know, what if you're reading 20 minutes a day, if you're reading 30 minutes a day, how important it is for preschool, to go to preschool. And if they have a preschool child, if they have a student that's at the preschool level, hooking them up with a neighborhood's preschool, just giving them an opportunity to freely speak with me and also get them involved in their student's education. Let's see. Another program that we use at the academy is Accelerated Reader, and I use some of our lottery funds to pay for SRA reading laboratories. And it's basically similar to Accelerated Reader, but it's not on the computer. And the reading laboratories are geared towards first grade and second grade, so every first-grade teacher and second-grade teacher has the reading laboratories, and there are, that's something new that they're implementing, and that's because the teachers came to me, and they said, "This is what I want. Okay, you want this, let's get it for you." And whatever, whatever resource that they need, where they feel that they, that can help them get every student proficient or advanced, I want to be able to get that to them, whether it's through our categorical funds or through our PTA. And our PTA's been very supportive with these programs, for paying for, like I said, our PE teacher and supporting that, also paying for the chorus teacher in the fourth through sixth grade. So, fourth through sixth grade also gets chorus, but the PTA also pays for that program, too. Another program that we're looking at, getting where I feel we're weak as a school, is technology, and I want to enhance our technology at our school, and getting Rizzoli Learning System, where it does student, it provides student profiles. So, if you're really geared towards the arts, and you like the arts, and you're learning about Egypt, you can learn about Egypt through the arts. If you're more into sports, and you do a student profile, and it's all standards-based, so every activity that they do is aligned to the standards. And that's important to me, where I've asked every teacher to post the standards on the whiteboards in front of the classroom. What I've said to them, "I don't know the standards, I haven't memorized all the standards kindergarten through sixth grade, I need to know them, too." So, when I go into the classroom and I'm doing walkthroughs, I want to see what standard that you're teaching. So, they know that, they're all posted, it's just a reminder to them what this, that you are, the standards come first and then core knowledge. And what I tell my parents about what's unique about our school, too, is that I tell the parents, "You almost get double. You get the California State Standards and you get Core Knowledge, because first comes the standards, then comes Core Knowledge." And what a great, great opportunity. And what a great, great opportunity. And I, and I will say that's probably why 90 to 95%, not higher, of the students that started in kindergarten are proficient and advanced. Also, on that note, you talked about an assessment and that, you know, what kind of assessments are we doing? I would like to, I would really like the district to look into the assessment called results. They use it in Northern California. I've talked to teachers in Northern California that do use the results assessment. And it gives specific areas to teachers where there's, where their student strengths and weaknesses are. So if they need, if they need help with segmenting or if they need help with different specific blends, it specifically tells them where their strengths are. And it also has comprehension, how do I articulate? Comprehend, reading comprehension passages more than just one or two. It has several, so they can do assessments. There's different, there's eight different, so they can do an assessment eight different times throughout the year. So it's not, there's not just three assessments you do at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the year. And I would like the district, and it's also very feasible. It's cheap. All you do, you have a binder and you just Xerox the binder. So it doesn't cost any money. So that's a good thing. So, um, let's see, what else can I tell you? Um, let me gear back a little bit. Some assessments that we are also use is the TASSA for our core knowledge. And that tells the teacher, that's what percentage of the curriculum they were, that the students retained. For example, if they're learning sayings and phrases, it, there's a section on the TASSA about the sayings and phrases, the core knowledge sayings and phrases. And it tells you what percentage of students were proficient in sayings and phrases. So each part of the core knowledge curriculum. And that gives the teacher feedback on the success rate of how they taught, maybe a specific. They said, oh, well, you know what, maybe I didn't teach magnets that well. Only 20% of my students retain the information. So I need to do a better job next year teaching magnets. So that's an assessment that we do when we revisit and we, and we meet as great, they meet as grade level teams and say, you know what, let's, let's change this. Let's change this to better meet our students' needs. And that's what we want from our students. So again, the weekly collaborative planning and monitoring of our students is vital to the success of our school, vital. And, and, and again, because of the, of the curriculum. I mean, we tell our teachers, this is hard work. You know, if you're coming to the academy, you have to be willing to work. This is not easy because the core knowledge curriculum provides the standards, but it also gives what teachers love is the creativity to teach the lesson. But if you're a teacher that likes scripted curriculums, this isn't the curriculum for you because it is a lot of work. And I would say that my veteran teachers who have been here since the school have started have really been supportive to our new teachers and ensuring the success of the curriculum. I know at every grade level that I taught at with the curriculum, the grade level team was just, just said, this is what we do. This is, this is how we get our students to that proficient or advanced level. This is, this is what we need to do in order for our students to be successful. And, and that's wonderful because I can, I can ensure you that it's happening kindergarten through sixth grade. Also, in, in math, something that we're doing is new this year. In teaching, again, kindergarten and first grade, I saw immediately when I looped with my students at first grade, you know what, this curriculum's too easy. Saxon math is way too easy for my first graders. They're way past that. So what we're doing this year is, starting in January, our kindergarten teachers are going to be using the first grade Saxon math, which is very much appropriate. And that is actually how the private schools utilize Saxon math. They actually started at the grade below. So it will take a while. And also because of our year round, our teachers don't need to be spending this first 20, 10 to 15, 20 unit or lessons reviewing. They don't need to do those. Don't do this. Throw those things out because, you know, we, they don't need a review because they've only been off for four weeks. And so I, the, I know the kindergarten teachers are excited about it. I know the first grade team is excited about it. So what will happen is in first grade, when they finish that curriculum, then they're going to be using the second grade curriculum. And by the time they get to third grade, they'll be a year ahead at fourth grade. And that's what Saxon math is designed for. So even though our math scores are fabulous, they're going to even be better. And so, and also with that in mind, when I taught fifth grade and I was part of the, the team that said, you know what, Saxon math is not working for the upper grades. Because when I taught fifth grade, I had high test scores. My students went up 19 NCEs at that time in math. But I said to, I said to the staff, how I did it was using Saxon math, but I also used hardcore. I go, because what's, what I was finding is the students weren't getting enough time to fully, fully master a new skill, a new concept. So in doing that, some of our, our teachers, and I know our fourth grade teachers are using still Saxon math because the, the strength of Saxon math is that it's a continual reveal. And I, I feel that's very important so students don't forget things. But at the same time, they need enough time to master a concept and that's where hardcore comes in. So that's where we made the change in hardcore math. And again, I, I know that our scores are even going to be better. So we're making some changes. I know with the split campus, it's been a bit of a challenge for our fourth through sixth grade teachers. But we're, we're striving to keep that connection together. I have staff meetings with the entire staff together. We rotate, one, one week we're at this site, the other week we're at the other site. I also write the weekly bulletin that goes to all this, all the teachers. I also do the Thursday newsletter that goes to all the parents, the kindergarten through sixth grade. So I'm trying to keep that, that campus as connected as possible to us so it doesn't feel like it's two separate campuses. And that they still feel supported because they still knew that instructional support. And I'm, I'm trying to give them that instructional support, especially with the English language learners. In doing that too, I also asked the teachers, I said, I want to look at your report cards. I want to see what students scored ones and twos. So I asked all the teachers to give me their report cards. I went over the report cards. And then where I saw, you know what, I, I feel like you need to give the parents more information. You, if, you know, there needs to be some backbone if you're going to take them to a student study team later on to say, and nothing was recorded on the report cards. Where's the evidence? Where's the support that they were at risk? So I'm trying to clean things up a little bit and give some support to that student study team too, if there needs to be a little help. And then also, what are you doing to meet those students' needs? And again, I, I will say, we have a wonderful special ed teacher who's been very helpful, very assertive. And where I feel, you know, if this student's far below basic, let's find out what's going on and let's do some assessments. And she's, she's really great. So Kate, good job. Um, let's see, what else? I just want to make sure. Also, something for professional development. Every year, our teachers go to the Core Knowledge Conference. And I cannot tell you how vital that is for just morale and support. You know, when we've had a split campus and we've had, oh, we might be moving next year, we might not. Every year, the teachers come back revived, excited to teach again. And I know it's, we use our categorical, a lot of our categorical funds to help pay for that. But I will say, teachers probably spend between $500 to $700 of their own money to go. Every single teacher does. And I will, I'm proud to say that every single teacher is going to Washington DC this year in February, everyone. And that's using their own funds. And, and I will say, you know, it's just, they, they come back, you know, I, I just remember when we went to Philadelphia and they said, oh, we, we saw the Liberty Bell and they come back with everything. We went into Betsy Ross's house and then we saw how money is made. I mean, so not only are they going to the conference, but on the days when the conference is over, they're, they're just soaking up the knowledge that's around them. And they bring it back to the classroom. And in the classroom, the, the students get excited because they see pictures of their teacher next to the Liberty Bell or in Betsy Ross's house. And they bring back reality. They spend, maybe they spend close to a thousand dollars. I mean, I know, just on, just getting all the, the resources to teach there, which is really neat. And again, I will say, our PTA is fabulous in supporting us. And the fact that they give every teacher $500 to spend in the classroom. And they, and that our fourth through sixth grade teachers get $25 a student. And that's to spend on instructional supplies. And, and our PTA works really hard on fundraisers. You know, we have these core group of parents who have been again with the school since it started and feel really strong and have seen the success of their students. And despite everything, you have just, I'm staying here because my student is thriving. And again, it's not the building, it's the people inside the building. I'm really excited about La Cumbre Junior High having a seventh and eighth grade Core Knowledge strand. And I know our parents too are too, and our families are too. I would like to see a Core Knowledge preschool because the Core Knowledge curriculum is actually pre-K through eighth grade. And I would love for our school to, to start that. I know Nancy Maynez is, I'm going to the Core Knowledge Conference. And she's going as a parent, but she's also going, she's spending her own money to go because she wants to learn about the preschool and she really wants to get her preschool started too. And so again, I have some great parents to support me. I have, I have to say thank you to Robin and everyone in the district who as a new principal, I feel 100% supportive. I know I, I called Cynthia and Michael and I asked them to present to our staff and our school site council, the school site plan template and how it works. And I wanted everybody to see it, how the functions of it. They came right away, next week they were there. Cynthia, I asked Cynthia, I said, Cynthia, I need some help in trying to figure out this online version and, and Smart Goals. And she said, I'll be there. And she, she was right there with Donna and I from Roosevelt. And she was fabulous. So thank you Cynthia. And, and again, to, you know, Robin has saved us so much money. And the fact where we're using our second through ninth grade uncapped funds. I, I mean, our students are in school from 7:45 to 5 o'clock or 5:30 sometimes. So we're, we're, we're doing, we're, I feel like then the moves, the changes that we're making are changes, not just to make changes, but changes to meet our students' needs and also to serve our student population. So I, I'm hoping I covered.
Well, that seemed pretty thorough to me. And we appreciate you being as energetic and enthusiastic as you are at this, at this time, having sat, had to sit through so many hours to wait for this point. Ms. Malkoff, we'll go ahead and start with you this.
Uh, let's see, you said there was this intercessions and tutoring for basic and below basic. It's not mandatory, I take it, they don't have to go to these, but do most students do, do go?
I would say probably 95% of the students went, attended. And the students that didn't attend had previous engagements, like vacation trips that they've already planned.
So that isn't a problem in terms of asking them to go and they want, they?
Well, a lot of time, you know, parents are free babysitting, to be honest, you know? They, they need a place for their child, so.
They're happy to accommodate. So you have all these kids going to La Cumbre with the bus, it sounds like. But they're staying for the after-school, so they're not coming back?
Actually, the fourth through sixth grade, the after-school program is on that campus. And at 5 o'clock, the students get bussed to the site. So whoever's left over at 5 o'clock gets sent over to this campus where the parents pick them up then. And that's just because I, I can't go to both sites.
I'm not sure I understand. So we have a bus that comes at the end of school day and then another one at 5 o'clock?
Yes, that we pay for at the end of the day, yes.
You, you got, you pay for?
Our after-school program pays for.
Is there very many that come back at 3:00 then?
Well, the problem, well, our PTA actually has enrichment classes too, after-school. So we have a lot of after-school programs where in the fourth through sixth grade right now, they have a money class, they have mad science, they have pep squad, art. So those students that aren't basic and below, and some of those students that are basic and below because the classes are just once a week, do attend those classes. But a lot of the students that maybe are proficient or advanced that want to be a part of an after-school program too, that don't want to use, because our school, our program on the site is full, they use those enrichment classes too. So it all depends on the time of year, whether or not they have those enrichment classes or not.
Well, it sounds like a lot of.
Or also the day.
Sounds like a lot of activities. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a quick question that really doesn't have anything to do with the single plan. But you mentioned that you do a new parent orientation class. So you have families now entering not in kindergarten as was originally intended, but you said second grade, I'm sure first grade. Has it been a big disruption to the curriculum cycle?
Yes. I, I will say, it's really difficult to get students that, that haven't been with the curriculum since kindergarten, as you can, as you can see, because the curriculum builds upon itself from year after year. So if you're coming in midway, the teachers are doing their best to catch them up, but you can only do so much. And also if you're, a lot, the students that are coming in are far below basic. A lot of those students are, especially, I, I feel in second grade. Because in second grade, we had, our enrollment was low, so we did what we could for enrollment. But we had, we received a lot of students that were really low. And so what we're doing with those students is, is targeting those students. Also assessing, you know, why are they low? A lot of assessment, going over the assessments with the teachers, where the strengths, where the strengths and weaknesses are. Some of it's language. And some of it is that they didn't receive a firm foundation in phonics. They were maybe in one school in kindergarten, another school in first grade. So they never got a phonics foundation. So they're struggling because when it's in second grade, you know, you're, that found, if you don't have that foundation, you have nothing to help support your reading.
I guess what I'm getting at is with declining enrollment and, and as a school of choice, do you feel like looking ahead, you're going to have to start to make adjustments to your program in order to accommodate that reality? That you're not going to get every student from kindergarten on?
Well, I'm hopeful now the fact that this year, we have three kindergartens again. Last year, we had two Ks, we dropped. And I think a lot of it was because of the split campus. This year, we worked really hard in recruiting students in kindergarten to get that third K. And we did do that and we're full in those three Ks. So I think, I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hopeful that those students will stay with us because they were with us during the bad, so they have to stay with us during the good.
Thank you.
Other board members?
Actually, you did a very thorough presentation, so I don't really have any questions. And I wanted to thank you for that and congratulate you for your ongoing success with your kids' test scores and of course, all the other measures. It goes beyond just that. I just have a really, a funny question. On the list of specific activities for monitoring, you have something called alligator slips. And I was wondering what that was?
It's our positive reinforcement, along with the pink slips, what are the negative reinforcement? Basically, if it's, if a student is caught exhibiting our core virtues, we have, instead of having character classics, we have core virtues that are similar to character counts. Then they can get an alligator slip through not only the classroom teacher, but the yard duty supervisor or the PE teacher. So it gives them some leverage to say, you know what, thank you for picking up that trash without asking the students to do it. So that, so intrinsically, they automatically are doing, they're being courteous. They're looking out for one another. So they're, there's positive reinforcement slips. After five, they get recognized by the principal. They get a pencil at our assembly and they get recognized in our newsletter. So their name's in the newsletter, so the parents know, they can see, oh, their student got five alligator slips. After 10, they get a book from the principal. I give them a book from Scholastic. After 15, alligator slips, they get lunch with the principal, so I take them out to lunch. So, and I also did something similar when I taught fifth grade with that program. And it worked very well. So we have the pink slips, which are almost like for, for the infractions that they have. But we also have the alligator slips.
And they're green?
They're green, yes. And I know our before we, before, I have parent volunteers that watch the students in the morning. And they say, it makes a world of difference in behavior. They said, just the, the fact that the students see them on the clipboard, their behavior changes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, congratulations on your maiden voyage here.
Thank you.
And you did a great job. I really appreciate it, very informative. I have a special interest in and love for the Core Knowledge program. And I'm not sure how widely recognized it is that. And I'm not sure how widely recognized it is, that, that it really represents a fundamentally different, uh, educational philosophy. Uh, for those who are, might be interested, it's Edie Hirsch, and his publications are well-known. Uh, and, uh, and it's an experiment that, uh, really, it goes back to Bob Poole's tenure on the school board, uh, and Mike Caston, uh, former superintendent, who put it all together, and I was honored to be on the board by the time it came up for a vote for, it's the, for inauguration. I'm very pleased and proud of, of that. Uh, I was particularly interested in, and it has always been a great concern, because we adopted the California standards after, uh, and, and the concern was, how do you reconcile the differences? Uh, are you, are you asking your teachers to do double duty? Uh, and then your comments on that were very interesting to me. You said, you say you do, the standard comes first, yeah, understandably. But does that, is that at the expense of core knowledge?
Yes. And so, you know, as teachers with this new ELD program, they're saying, "Phew, how are we supposed to do this? It's cutting into our core knowledge time," and it is cutting into core knowledge time, so they are losing their core knowledge time with the new ELD program. So yes, and, and then part of being an official visitation site was, we had to, it was extensive process, and putting the California state standards, aligning them with the core knowledge standards, so the teachers could see where the gaps are and what needs to be covered. So each grade level has that book, and that, that was done in being in, as part of our official visitation certification.
How many public core knowledge schools are there, elementary schools are there in California?
I believe, I think there's three or four. There's one in San Diego.
Is there any kind of collaborative, if you're, you're all struggling with the same problem of meeting of California standard, of, uh, building the consistency between the two?
And I, I want to address that when I go to Washington DC and, and talk to other principals and find out. I, I believe they're trying to, the Core Knowledge Foundation is trying to do some sort of alignment with the standards at every state, and I want to see where we're at on that. I know there was talk about that last time I was at the conference, to, so also to see where the foundation is in ensuring that those standards are met with the curriculum. I know it's, and it's part of NCLB, it's an intervention that's been approved by NCLB. So, but also at our, our state level, what are we, what are they doing to align that? So...
Um, that's very interesting. I, I also applaud you for not just using Saxon math, and particularly for the kind of spiral, to take advantage of the continual review that it involves, but then, because I've heard others say the same thing, at some point, it runs out of gas. Uh, and for, at that point, particularly, then augmenting it with the, the hardcore, that's a good combination.
It is. Fabulous.
Yeah, that's terrific. I'm a little puzzled by some, uh, some entries in here, and I think perhaps Dr. White would, would, would help as much as, uh, I see that there are just repeated entries for centralized services, Dr. White, and, and some of them don't sound like centralized services. It looked to me like it might just be a, uh, something that was unintentional.
Actually, that's just an error. We're working with Excel, the Academic Accelerator Program to fix that. Uh, Ms. Alzina had nothing to do with filling out that chart. That filled out itself automatically, so that's something that is a glitch in the program, and so the company is aware of it, and that will be fixed.
Well, it was clear as soon as you read the, the whole thing that, that these aren't centralized services, but I just, I, I, but I wanted to make sure that, and I, and it's really great to be able to blame a machine, uh, rather than a person, so, or a program, anyway.
We're going to do that regularly now. We're just playing the machine.
Play the damn machine. The Core Knowledge Conference, I, I, I also think that's a terrific use of, of categorical funds, and I, and I've, I've not, I've only been to one, sort of, one, early on, uh, and it's, and I just, uh, think it's, everything I've heard from the beginning of, of the academy, that that's a central part of it. Uh, and I encourage you to keep doing that. It's a great socialization experience, uh, for the teachers, and I like the way they're feeding it back into the classroom. That's, uh, that's terrific. I also see you're a believer in behavioral, in behavior theory.
Yes.
Well, that's a good debate also, isn't it? You know, intrinsic versus extrinsic, extrinsic motivation. Uh, I think folks are doing a great job. Uh, I, I would like to see, you know, the hope was that this would be a model that would be emulated in the district, uh, and particularly because, you know, we have an experiment going on here, namely, we've got core knowledge curriculum, but we've also got a school of choice, and we don't know which variable is accounting for what hunk of, of the variance, Dr. Jarvis, you know? And it'd sure be nice to see a neighborhood school with a, where the core knowledge component in it, and so we could have a, a minor controlled experiment, experiment.
That would be a great competition, wouldn't it?
Bring it on.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your presentation, and, and I commend all of your staff for, for the great job they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I'm sure board members heard the word breakfast, that all students are getting breakfast, and the two hours of instruction was also very impressive.
Yes. The after-school?
Yes.
Yes, I agree. Um, I just, I just have a very quick, very specific question, and that is, when you mentioned your API growth goals, I believe that you said that you had gone from 749 to 773?
Oh, I was, in 2004, sorry. Two years before, the year before, 769, yes.
Okay, okay, so it, the, the number that's listed here is ac, is correct, the 769?
No, I, I, no, I was right. Sorry, 749 to 773.
Okay, so we have, so the 773 is for 06, 07, then?
No, 05, 06.
Because the number listed on our sheet was 769?
Yes, that's changed.
That has changed, okay.
The one that Davis just gave me said 773.
Okay, okay, that's the only thi, I was just wondering if, if we had an incorrect number. Um, I actually think all the other things that I was going to focus on, you prob, I probably don't, I can probably just bypass most of them. Um, the, uh, I just was going to ask you also, given your year-round calendar, if you've seen any difference in terms of the, uh, attendance that you have, and if you think that the length of the times, of the, the breaks make a difference, or is it just, do you think it's just people, the, sort of the culture of the school?
Well, I know because we are a school of choice, so they're choosing the year-round calendar, unlike Cleveland being a neighborhood school, so we probably see higher attendance rate maybe than Cleveland because of that. Um, and looking at our attendance rate, it was, was fairly good, and you know, we're, we're striving to improve that. Um, we were at 3.05% average, and the district average was 4.8. Um, you know, as a new principal and not seeing the full year, it's difficult for me to probably assess. Um, but I will say, I think, I'll, I think the reason why probably our attendance rate might be higher again is probably because we're a school of choice, and they, they know that signing up, that's part of the, that's part of the package.
That does make sense. Well, I think that concludes all of our questions and comments for you, and again, once again, we have, I, uh, thank you for, for staying late. Your, your, you, you said, you told your colleagues, "Don't abandon me," and I look around, there's none of them here left. Um, although I have to, I have to say, they, some of them were rushing off for very...
Good reasons.
Good reasons, yes. Um, but thank you very, very much, and again, we appreciate, uh, the kind of day you've had today, so, um, thank you for being here, and thank you for your enthusiasm, and I thank the, the staff and the rest of the board for being here, and I think we can call our meeting to a conclusion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, not yet.
Oh, no, I just wanted to remind you that we will continue with the, um, elementary school single plan presentations next Friday.
Friday.
At 8:30, as I recall.
Okay, so we will now adjourn.
Oh, and, and I assume that we'll adopt the, uh, single plans at that point in time, right?
Yeah.
Well, let me ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.